Welcome to the Buffalo Board of Education work session for this evening. So it's going to be a little bit different from our normal format. We are going to combine three of our subcommittees or three of our committees into one report about the reopening, and then we'll follow up with our financial, our finance and operations report out about the federal stimulus, district financial and budget updates. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent, Dr. Krenner Cash.
Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to this boardwork session. I want to commend staff for their diligence and hard work and every day, all day, and into the weekends during this difficult time for all of us. They prepared some slides at my direction. We think these will be helpful to you in giving you an update on where we are at this time to reopen the schools in phase one of an in-person opening. Keeping in mind that schools have been open since September 8th in remote learning instruction. So we will have, I don't know, about a dozen slides that staff will go through with you, and all staff and their ones and twos and threes are on the call. So there are many, many people on the call tonight to help us in the discussion portion of the meeting. I have some slides that I'd like to start off with to set the context as we typically do around this deadly contagion. And it's just to give an update, kind of right up to date today, right up to date today. Next week, I will be inviting Dr. Dennis Quo back to the board meeting, and he will give us an update from his perspective and what he would like to see happen. Been working with us on a regular basis as our medical director, and while there are some encouraging news and signs, there's also continues to be some concerns that we share. So we'll do that next week. What I would like to do, colleagues, if you could, I did send a copy of the slides to you, and if you could make notes on the side or in the margins of the deck where you might have a question or two or three, please do so. I would just like to kind of continue to flow through so we don't get bogged down. And then when you have the big perspective, the whole perspective, then we'll come back and go as deep and as long as you'd like on any one of these big bucket items. So if that's agreeable, I'll begin. Mike, you should have the slide deck. If you could put up the cover slide and then go to slide one.
Dr. Cash, can I just say on behalf of Ann Rivera, she said that she is coming into the meeting. She wanted you to know that. She's running a little late, okay? She asked me to let you know.
I'm sorry, some of that cut off. Did you say that Ann Rivera, and then I didn't hear it?
Wants you to know that she is coming to the meeting. She's just running a little late, okay?
I got it. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, does that mean that's not a bad thing?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mike, thank you. So colleagues, nationwide, nationwide, as of today, we have over 23 million COVID cases. We have a 14-day change that is up 37%. And when you look out at the state-to-state data, nearly all of the states have an arrow pointing up in terms of the number of cases and the trajectory of their cases. We now have 300, over 380,000 deaths from COVID that have been reported nationwide. We're averaging over 3,000 deaths per day. And in some recent days, we've had over 4,000 deaths in one day from COVID. We're averaging about 250,000 cases per day now, whereas when we started school, we were at about 18,000 to 23,000 cases.
That's right.
And that seemed like a lot then, and we stood out in front of City Hall together, and we were concerned at that time that the number of cases were beginning to rise again. We now are at 250,000 cases per day. My sister, who I spoke with earlier, had 70 cases of children in her school alone. And she's in a high school in Orlando, Florida. They often don't report this data evenly all across the country. We've had a dramatic accelerated acceleration here in Western New York from 650 just several weeks ago to now 750-plus new daily cases in Western New York. Hospitalizations are remaining elevated this week, yielding 143 COVID-19 fatalities in the first two weeks of January. The positivity rate seems to be holding at or around 8%, but Dr. Quo will bring us another 14-day look at that on next week because I felt like that would be about the time we would start to see any post-December holiday surges that might occur from that time. More than 68,000 people have tested positive for COVID-19 in Western New York, and now we have a new mutated strain, B.117, that is rising across the country, and has caused the total shutdown of the United Kingdom at this time. Next slide, please. You can get this kind of data from the New York Times each day. I get the New York Times on my phone as an app each day. It's a very good newspaper. It's important as an accurate source of information. And this is the picture for New York State. New York State was bad back in early going, as we know, but now look at it since from March till now, it's going back and further than it was back then. Because before, it was New York City mainly driving that data, and now you can see that New York State as a whole has seen much more significant increases in cases since we shut down for COVID back in March. That slide is telling about the state of the state. So it's not getting better, colleagues. It's not going down. We haven't bet anything, and we haven't flattened anything anytime in the near future that I can see and that you can see right here. Next slide, please. Moving more into the region, into the city and county, 16, over 16,000 confirmed cases in Buffalo as of yesterday, over 47,000 cases confirmed in Erie County as of up to date right now, and over 1,614 confirmed cases in Erie County that where people have died. Many people now know people, friends, relatives, associates, who have died from COVID. And that increase in deaths has occurred largely since December 1st. So this isn't going back months. This is going back about a month and a half, and we see the increase almost 50%, 40% increase of deaths since that time. Colleagues, we also needed to track children because in my mind, as an educator and as someone who tries to track the research across the world about this deadly disease in children, there's still more questions than answers. There don't seem to be as many children that die from COVID, but there are a lot of cases. And so there are over 2.3 million cases having been reported, and children represent about 12.5% of all cases. And I think that's a national picture. I have to check on whether that's international or national, but I believe it's national. Over the past two weeks alone, there was a 15% increase in child COVID-19 cases ages four through 18, four through 18. And the main point here, colleagues, is while the fear of death at this point doesn't seem to be the biggest worry with children, the biggest worry is that children go, many of our children especially, go back into households where there are two, three generations living together, sometimes out of necessity, sometimes out of recent illnesses of a family member that when that happens, you have to take on the family member because that's the way it is. And so now children are in homes and places where they are vulnerable to both the disease itself, and they can be carriers of the disease, even if asymptomatic. So there's a lot we don't know about how this disease operates short-term and long-term in children. We're starting to see long-haul COVID cases in adults, many adults who have gotten sick and then they remain sick for a long, long time, sometimes have to go back multiple times to a hospital because they're still not shaking the most contagious and the most troublesome aspects of this disease. We also know that the neurological symptoms and multi-inflammatory syndromes in children are still being studied. And as I said, while there aren't a lot of cases of deaths, my sister did report to me, who works with autistic children, 15 to 21 years old, in her class. One 15-year-old died recently from COVID that was in her class. Again, this is a very, very serious and deadly disease. And the reason I say it, I don't say it for the purpose of anything other than information, but colleagues, the mindset, the mindset about this, and my professional judgment has been wrong. The mindset about, from some, that we must open and that we must somehow return to normalcy and begin to open this and open that when we had massive failure at all levels of government to control this disease, it's an outrage to me. It's an outrage to me. And we've been on our own from the very beginning with this deadly pandemic. There have been no solutions, none, and there's been no concerted effort to actually get it done. It just hasn't happened. And I've talked about that in previous meetings. And so the issue to me is that we've got to be aware that until adults, because the issue isn't children, until adults take seriously the fact that masking or not masking is not really a choice, this isn't some freedom, this is putting other people's life in jeopardy. You aren't free to put my life in jeopardy. You don't have that freedom. And that's what's going on too much, too often, every day right now. And that, more than anything, is why I always have this reservation about bringing children back because it's the adults that aren't getting it right. They're not staying apart, they're not masking, they're not staying safe so that I can feel much more encouraged in speaking to my families and to the children themselves and to staff that we are safe to return because our behavior shows that we can return and begin to return safely. We're not there yet. And that should be clear to everyone that's paying attention to what's going on in our world and in our society today. So I don't buy that trope that we got to get this and we got to get back when we're in this condition in the world and in this Erie County right now. Next slide, please. Now, that having been said, what I said we would do all along is we would get ready. We would get ready, and we will be as ready as we possibly can as a large school district to begin to return some of the children that we have invited to come back and start in a phase one if by next week Dr. Quo recommends doing so, and the data looks like we can do it, and you all believe that is something we should do, then we'll carry on with this plan for February 1 for a selected population of students. And let me be clear at the outset what that population is. We said we would do it for the highest needs students that each school identified based on data that they have about their students. So for pre-K to 8 schools, they have seats for 100 students, up to 100 students that they can identify and invite to come back based on a variety of needs. It could be multiple needs, it could be academic needs, it could be social, emotional, and other things that are going on with the student that principals say, I want to have, I need that youngster back as soon as possible, as soon as it is possible to do so. So that's pre-K to 8, when we've also said that the younger students need to start to come back because of how much time they've missed with others, with other children, with some of the enrichment activities that occur when you're with others in a school setting taught by excellent staff. And that would be pre-K to grade 2 for pre-K to 8 schools. So high-need students plus pre-K to 2, that's your population we've invited back for February 1 for pre-K to 8. For high schools, 9 to grades 9 through 12, again, the principal and his team or her team will determine which of the 9 through 12 students they feel could use the special attention and focus from in-person learning. And they have their seats, up to 100, and that has been determined for all of the high schools. But in addition to that group, that high-need group, we've also invited seniors to come back flexibly scheduled, but to come back so that we can keep our focus and attention on the seniors to make sure they graduate and have a great post-secondary career and future ahead of them. We were successful and able to do that last year. We want to be even more successful in doing that for the class of 2021. So this slide will have Ann Botticelli start giving you an update on remote instruction because remember, we're in remote and we still will be serving many families and children through the remote instruction model as we go forward. So I just wanted to, high level, one slide, what are some of our points of pride and things that we think we will continue to do when we're all back in instruct, in person? And what are some areas we can continue to improve in, opportunities for improvement? We call those our glows and our grows. So Ann and her team are here to talk about these next three slides, starting with remote instruction, and then we'll go into two sample examples for you, graphic examples of how students will come back in the pre-K to 2 and high-needs population, what that looks like or will look like. So Ann?
Good evening. So I'd like to start by talking a little bit about some of the glows that we've seen throughout the remote experience. So I think we've talked about this before, but it continues to be really important. We have an increased outreach and connection with families due to the nature of our remote program. Schools have made a concerted effort to identify liaisons and to continue to reach out to different families. If they haven't heard from a family in a while, they make sure that there's contact. They just really have done a wonderful job of helping to connect students, families to the school setting. So that has been a definite glow for us. They say that necessity is the mother of invention. Well, we've been forced to innovate, and I think we've taken away a lot of practices that we'll probably continue in the future. So we had to introduce virtual and self-paced professional development in the past years. And it actually has turned out to be a very big positive for us. It allows us to pre-record professional development so that teachers can watch it at different times and at their leisure. The virtual experience has actually proven to be very productive. People make wonderful use of streaming videos and chat features and really connect to the learning. We've taken the virtual world into our meeting settings, and we may never go back. It's actually very convenient. So if someone was having trouble getting to a school or getting to the location where a meeting is being held, we'll meet in setting, open stores for families, for staff who can't travel. And then we've had to really innovate with a lot of our teaching strategies, doing a lot of different techniques through virtual learning that I'm sure people will want to continue when they move back to more of an in-person setting. We've made very strategic use of our technology. We were fortunate that we had a number of platforms prior to COVID. So for example, we already had Schoology as a learning management system. Schoology has been pivotal to our success. It allows a teacher to organize course, post content for students. Students can connect through Schoology. It allows us to host Teams meetings by putting a link into the Schoology platform. So we've been very fortunate that we already had a basic understanding of Schoology, and we've continued to enhance that. On top of which, we have platforms like Lexia and Xern and Myon and MobiMax, all of these things that allow our students to work asynchronously. But they were valuable before, and they'll continue to be valuable when we return to in-person instruction because they provide rich layers of intervention and instruction for our students. Actually, the elementary principals had some additional training today on Xern, and I think they were very excited about it. It's an elementary program that mirrors what students are learning in the math modules. So it reinforces everything that their teachers have been working on, and it's a perfect partner to the modules themselves. We've been able to increase student voice during the pandemic. So they've been doing a lot of work in different departments to hold focus groups and get feedback from students about what they like and don't like. Special ed has also been very innovative, and they've started connecting with eighth grade students who might be making choices about which high school to select. So I believe they started with their 12-1-1s and 15-1s and plan to expand. And it's also going to be expanded to multilingual, giving students more of an understanding of what they are going to be selecting as they choose their high schools. And this type of opportunity can expand beyond just the high school ahead program. Distance learning has actually also been used in the special education world. So the special ed department put together distance learning plans to track specially-designed instruction across classrooms. So teachers submit the plans that they are modifying or how they will make modifications for their students so that we are able to ensure that SDI is being offered. There's definitely room to grow, as there is in any situation. So one of the things that we continue to work on is our technology skills. I think people had a fair knowledge of technology when we went out, but there were so many new platforms, people had to learn so many new types of applications, so many new strategies, that the IT department really stepped up. They provided a lot of professional development, they hold office hours, we've hired additional ITCs, they use Workplace very strategically. Teachers can send questions, they get responses from the IT department, and teachers also use Workplace to showcase things that they're learning about. So you can go on there and actually see a lot of new strategies teachers have tried in the classroom. We know that we need to continue to increase student engagement. When we first went out, we had to make a lot of calls and try to connect with students, and I think schools have done a really good job of that. But there's always more to do in terms of social, emotional learning and supports for our kids. Teachers are sharing strategies that they use through Workplace. I actually sometimes post strategies that teachers might want to try, and we've been offering professional development along those lines. We're going to be offering additional professional development before returning to school February 1, just to make sure everybody has that in line. And then the pandemic, I know everyone is aware of this, but has really put a spotlight on equity across the nation and certainly in Buffalo. So one of the ways that we've responded to this is by providing one-to-one devices to our students, securing internet access for our students, partnering with community organizations, really doing the best that we can to ensure that kids have access so that they don't get left behind as we move forward with remote. And even when we're back in person, we know how important it's going to be because kids with access can do more at home at the end of the school day, they can stay connected, they can research. So it's really important, and it's something that we'll continue to focus on. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is just a quick model to show you some of the cohorts of students that teachers will be working with. So teachers may have some or all of these scenarios taking place in their classroom. There are going to be five-day remote learners, so those students who've elected to stay home for all five days or who haven't been yet invited back to the classroom. On the other side, there will be five-day in-person learners. So Dr. Cash was talking about that group of our neediest students that have been invited back for full five-day in-person classes. Then many schools, pre-K to 2, and in some cases at the high school, will also be doing hybrid learning. So there's a hybrid option of a Monday, Tuesday in-person or a Thursday, Friday in-person model. And then at the high school level, they selected one of three options as they brought their upperclassmen back. So they might have chosen the hybrid model with the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday cohorts, and then in addition to the targeted phased-in population that are going to be returning for all five days. They might have chosen a senior support group. So they might have divided their seniors into particular cohorts, and they'll be returning about one day a week depending on need, and they'll have special teachers assigned to work with them, they'll have guidance doing in-person circles, identifying areas of potential trauma or struggle, really working with those students on staying on track with their coursework, getting ready for college, being prepared with essays, et cetera. So that will also include the targeted phase-in population that is there for five days. And the third option was a combination of all the others. So some schools might have elected to have a hybrid model where they report two days a week, senior support sessions where certain students report one day a week, as well as their targeted phase-in populations returning all five days. So there was a little more variability for the model that was selected at the high school level, but that's because we wanted to accommodate all of our seniors and really ensure their future success. So knowing that, what instructional model will best support each of these learning environments? So if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This is just a sample, and I'm going to talk This is just a sample and I'm going to talk a little bit about what it means. So there's two main ways teachers will be delivering instruction as we return. They might be using a learning lab and this is predominantly secondary. So students would follow their regular schedule, but they would remain in one location throughout the day and they would connect to their classes remotely. There would be students from different classes clustered together because often the schools are choosing to group them by certain types of need. So maybe it's by advisory group and their advisor would be the teacher who stays in the room with them, or perhaps a counselor would be assigned, but that will vary a little bit by school. The goal is to support those students and keep them focused on instruction, ensure that they are catching up on any missing assignments. When they're not participating in class, they can be part of a restorative circle. They can work on their college applications with support from guidance counselors. They might be catching up again on missing assignments. So there will be a definite focus on supporting those students. Probably the model that'll be used more frequently is concurrent instruction. And I use that term in a broad sense. I know there's some people with very strict definitions, but I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're saying. So this means that teachers are working with two groups of students predominantly, in person and remote learners. The lesson format might vary. So there'll be times when there's whole group synchronous instruction being delivered, meaning that kids in the classroom and kids at home are working together at that time. So it's simultaneous. In that, if they're using that particular mode, the teacher would be teaching on teams and both groups of students would be focused on the teams meeting. The teacher can broadcast onto her IWB, the interactive whiteboard, to show the students at home so that students in school can see them, et cetera. So there's different ways that teachers can connect the students when they're doing, when they're introducing new content or they want to bring the group together for morning meeting or other types of activities. There will also continue to be asynchronous instruction and teacher led instruction. So teachers might break students out by environment. So they might work with the remote learners while the in person learners are doing an activity. They could flip flop that and work with the in person learners while the remote learners are working at home asynchronously. They can also do flexible grouping by need. So they might group in a teacher led group, they might pull two students who are in the classroom and bring them together with two students who are at home. Or they could partner students in breakout rooms to work together. But we do encourage them to try to partner in school and at home learners because we think it'll be good for connectivity in the classroom and fostering that sense of engagement for all learners. So the graphic that you're looking at is just a sample of what could happen during a reading block. We know that schools will have to nuance these depending on who's sitting in front of them, what activity they're working on at the time. So again, this is just a sample, but it provides opportunities for that whole group synchronous concurrent instruction as well as for breaking students out in smaller groups to get more individualized attention. It will honor the synchronous and asynchronous formats that we've already worked on with our teachers. And the the use of breakout rooms will help to foster again that connection between the two groups. So teachers will have some discretion as they implement this model because it could look a little different at different grade levels, et cetera. So again, this is just a sample, but we thought it was important to show you so you'd have a sense of what might be happening in a classroom. During that first 30 minute block, the teacher might be doing a phonics lesson. They could be working on phonemic awareness. They might do the read aloud from a from one of the selections. Then they might break up the students into two groups and have the students who are remote work with the teacher, maybe doing a grammar lesson, a writing lesson, reading the story for the first time together. While the other students could be practicing phonics activities, doing cold reads, practicing fluency, spelling vocabulary. The next day, they might flip flop the groups so that it's an equitable opportunity for both sections of students. At other times, they could be pulling those small groups again, like I said. So teacher led instruction isn't going to go away. It just might look a little different in this format. So there's going to be opportunities for both groups to work together as well as for both groups to be separate and for teachers to pull different groups based on flexible needs. Thank you.
Anne, could you stress before you go on, we go on, Mike, could you stress the reason we chose this type of hybrid or this type of synchronous and asynchronous approach is because it maximizes the opportunity for students to have their same teachers? That was really important. And while there's different kinds of hybrids out there, some of them, you actually have to change teachers and so forth. So we wanted to maximize the opportunity for students and families to keep that relationship and keep that first teacher that they've had all year. Could you just say something about that? I think that's why we chose this approach.
Yes. So in most instances, we're hopeful that the teacher will remain with the same group of students. One of the ways to make that happen is to have this concurrent model. Again, it doesn't always mean that your both groups are together all the time, but it does give that opportunity, especially when you're introducing new content. But also it maintains the consistency that we've had all year. So not only are you with the same teacher, you're with the same group of students and your schedule will still be very similar if even though there might be some nuances. So you'll still have that synchronous opportunity, that asynchronous opportunity. You'll recognize the faces that are with you. You'll feel connected to your own teacher. And even though you might be working remotely while the other students are in the classroom, you're not going to be deprived of opportunities because you'll still connect with that class and you'll still get teacher's instruction synchronously.
There you go. Well explained, well well stated. Thank you so much. Mike, next slide, please. So colleagues, Myra Burden will just give a brief overview of kind of where we are with devices and internet connectivity. Myra.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, board members. So another area I believe the district was fortunately positioned in is the area of devices in order to adequately respond to remote learning as a result of the pandemic. The district had already worked in a one to one device model for its students in grades three through 12. And then we obtained SmartSchool's funding to purchase iPads to outfit a one to one model for our pre K through second grade students. To date, we have 30,334 devices distributed to our students in grades pre K through 12. So that brings us to just over a 97%, a nearly 98% distribution rate with about 829 students that we don't believe are using a BPS issued device. So we are encouraging students to pick up a district issued device specifically and particularly if they will be returning to the school buildings under one of the aforementioned learning models. We've also distributed 5,024 hotspots. And with regard to the Spectrum Stay Connected Program, I'm excited to say that we have 595 equipment kits that have been activated. We conducted a survey and received a very high rating in terms of customer service as well as reliability and consistency to support remote learning at home. We are moving forward with continuing to roll out eligible households. So as you can imagine, with households moving and the change in residents and things like that, we have to keep checking against our student database and crosswalking that with Spectrum's information to make sure that we have an accurate list of those households that will be qualified for this program. For school internet connectivity, some of the concerns that had been expressed by the principals was the internet connectivity in school. So since November, our network telecom team has replaced at least 30 wireless access points or repaired them. And in order to balance the number of clients that could hit a wireless access point in the schools, our newer iPads that were distributed to the pre K through second grade students are equipped with an internal SIM card that can also act as an individual hotspot while the children are in the school. So we do want to encourage students that will be returning to the school buildings to bring the device in a backpack or school bag fully charged each day. And teachers will also be able to give guidance regarding the need for a device in in school any day or the following day.
Thank you, Myra. Next slide, please. Colleagues, these next four slides, our COO, Chief of Operations, Jim Wymer, will present the overview of these slides. And I believe Cheryl Kennedy will come on, come on and do transportation updates for you. Jim Wymer.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Cash, and thank you. We wanted to give you some high level information about what we've been doing on the operations side of the district to prepare our buildings to be ready to go when we reopen. The first thing we're going to talk about here is hand washing and sanitizing. Frequent hand washing will be encouraged and it is extremely important for students to be able to access a hand washing area with hot water and soap and paper towels. We have spent a lot of time making sure that our buildings have hot water. We've repaired a lot of hot water tanks and different things. So we think we're in great shape with that. Hand sanitizing dispensers have been converted to alcohol based and are available throughout schools. So originally, the hand sanitizing dispensers were not alcohol based and we had to convert every single one of them in the district and there are thousands. We are about 95% complete with that conversion and we also have portable hand sanitizers at entryways through throughout our schools. Meals and water. All students will have access to free breakfast and lunch. Students attending in person will eat their meals according to their school specific plan. So each school has designed according to their canned and designed plan, a way to safely have their students eat, whether it's in the classroom or in a cafeteria or possibly another large space. But each school has a specific plan for that. Drinking water will be available through the food service department and also at bottle fillers, which we are installing at all of our schools. So the water fountains that exist will be covered and each school will have a number of bottle fillers where students can fill their own water bottles in addition to having the the food service option. Meals will also be available for pickup on Monday, Wednesday and Friday from 11:00 PM to 1:00 PM, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, I'm sorry, at existing distribution sites. So we're continuing our food service distribution that's been going on since last March. Next slide, Mike. Clean disinfection. So these are high level points that we want you to see. It is obviously a lot more involved and complex operation, but we wanted to show you that, you know, arrival of students, there is cleaning, disinfection of all areas used by groups during arrival. During the school day, cleaning, clean and disinfect high touch areas, including door handles, stair railings, elevator buttons will be done three times a day. We will be cleaning and disinfecting bathrooms two times daily and after school. All staff will support cleaning efforts to the extent practicable. Regular school cleaning and maintenance will occur daily after school, including disinfection with electrostatic sprayers. Principals have been provided with a comprehensive cleaning checklist to help all of us support in making sure that our buildings are safe. So personal protective equipment, PPE, and facial coverings. The uniform policy in the district, if there are schools that have uniforms, will be enforced. Facial coverings will be required for everyone on both bus, transportation and in school. Facial coverings must be a double layer of cloth and be snug fitting to cover both nose and mouth. If a child needs a facial covering, we could please contact your school principal. The BPS has a two month supply of personal protective equipment. PPE supplies include masks in adult and child sizes, gloves, face shields, hand sanitizer, wipes, safety goggles, isolation gowns, thermal scanners, handheld temperature readers, decals and floor coverings, and plexiglass partitions in common areas such as office in areas where there may be interaction with the public. Want to welcome Cheryl Kennedy, who is the District Director of Transportation, onto the meeting now. And she's going to give us a quick update on the complex transportation system that she oversees. Cheryl, are you there?
Jim, good evening, board members and superintendent. All of our buses, both, thank you. Good evening. All of our buses, both Metro and Yellow buses, will be disinfected daily. All of the high touch areas will be cleaned intermittently throughout the day. And what that means is that for our yellow buses, in between each school run, all of the high touch areas, the seat backs, the handrail, any area that students are coming into contact with will be wiped down between school runs and on the metro buses as well. Those will be wiped down several times throughout the day. All of our bus drivers, bus aides and students will be required to wear an acceptable face covering at all times, both while on the bus or in a train station, and that's throughout their entire ride. We are going to reduce bus capacity to promote social distancing. And what that means is that on a yellow bus, on a large yellow bus, we're going to seat one student per seat. And the only exception to that will be students from the same household will be encouraged to sit together. Students will be allowed to carry a personal sized bottle of hand sanitizer on the bus, on both on yellow buses as well as the metro buses. And we ask that that's less than an eight ounce size bottle. And, excuse me, the bottom line is that I'm very confident that both Metro and Yellow Bus will be prepared to return students for a February reopening.
Thank you, Cheryl. That's, that's great and encouraging news. And I trust that includes bus drivers, bus aides, et cetera, as you've identified. In terms of supply and staffing, you feel confident about that as well. So we'll, we'll get back to that if board members have a question. I just want you to be prepared to answer that question if it comes up.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Well done, Cheryl. Thank you so much. So colleagues, these next two slides will be presented by Dr. Tanja Williams. And they address our testing procedures, protocols and availability and a word or two about the status of vaccine for our educator staff. Tanja.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, and good evening, board members and colleagues. It's good to see that everyone is here and well. So you know that for student support services, a lot of the work that we do in student support, it's collective work, meaning that we work very closely with all of our different departments and divisions. And so as we've been working on looking at testing and looking at, you know, establishing protocols for our vaccinations, you know, we've worked you know, we've worked very closely with our associates of school leadership and our principals. We've worked with Jim Weimer and his team, worked with Jamie Warren and the Human Resource Team, Anne Bodichelli with Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Dr. Morell with the CLRI piece, Kim Holsher ensuring that everything that we're doing is taking into account our students who may be classified with disabilities and their needs, and our multilingual department with Nadia Neshir to make sure that everything that we're doing is translated and that our families that may speak other languages have opportunities to share feedback and share questions and needs and that kind of thing. So with respect to our testing, I'm very pleased to share that we will be giving, it's called the Rapid Nasal Binex Test. And we've all seen, I think, on TV or had family members that have gone through the other test that's a little more invasive. This test is less invasive than the test that we've all seen. It's a fairly easy test to give. So per the New York State Department of Health, because everything that we're doing, we take our guidance from either the New York State Department of Health, the CDC, or the Erie County Department of Health, and it's required that 20% of all of our returning students and staff must be tested randomly. And so we have some flexibility on how that looks. We probably will be doing bi-weekly testing, 10% of each bi-weekly, which will add up to the 20% per month. We want to, the most important thing is that we want to begin testing prior to the date, February 1st. We don't want to wait until school is starting and then begin the testing. So we're gearing up now with trainings and all of that to make sure that the week of January 25th, that we're ready, we're prepared to begin testing. So all of our nurses are the group that will be actually doing the testing, and they are going through training this week with our Erie County Department of Health. So again, the binex test, we're creating a video, we're working with Ella McCullough, and we're creating a video. We want to ensure that our parents are comfortable with the test, that they know exactly what the test is going to entail. We've received the test, we've looked at the kits, they have a nasal swab. You put the swab in, not very invasive. You circle five times in each nostril, and that's basically what the test consists of. So Dr. Brown Hall went and he picked up the test. We have the test in City Hall. We've got about 14 cases of tests, close to 9,000 tests. I know that Dr. Cash really advocated for us to get these tests on hand, and I'm just pleased to say that we do have them, they are secured. We will have a licensed, certified nurse who will be keeping close watch over the test and disseminating those tests in a systematic fashion out to schools. Let's see here.
I think Tanja.
Mostly with Dr. Yes.
That you and Dr. Quo and his team are planning to, go ahead, I think you know what I want you to do.
That's where I was going next. We meet frequently with our medical directors. Dr. Quo kind of being the lead. We meet frequently every single week. We're setting up protocols on what has to happen prior to test administration. So we have a consent for testing that we will be sending out and that will be available electronically to our families so that they can fill it out. It's a fairly simple form to fill out and to submit electronically. Once we get it, then we know, you know, the students will be selected randomly for testing. They'll be called down. They will report to the nurse's office. They'll have their test, and within 15 minutes, we'll have a result on whether or not the student is negative or positive. We've created a flow chart so that all schools know and understand, if there is a positive result, what has to happen to ensure safety for all. So we are working very closely with our medical directors, and we're taking advisement from them on how this has to roll out. Next slide, please. So we know that even though the vaccine has been released and it's, you know, it's an effect that COVID-19 is still spreading. I think, as Dr. Cash mentioned earlier, most of us have family members or friends, or we know of folks who have been impacted by COVID-19. So we know the importance of this vaccine, but I think we also know and understand that, you know, there are some concerns. The COVID-19 virus has impacted disproportionately communities of color. And we know that, you know, in many of our communities, unfortunately, people have suffered higher mortality rates, but that the testing of those, within those communities, has been lower than it has been in other communities. We know that there are healthcare provider deserts that exist within inner-city communities. We know that oftentimes, you know, there are underlying illnesses that some of our, you know, families are suffering from, and all of these things have an impact on this virus. And so we are really, you know, supporting. We can't mandate that folks take the vaccine, but we are strongly recommending that vaccinations and this vaccine is something that they're really considering. And so in sharing that, you know, again, the seriousness and how it has impacted, you know, many of our children and families. Dr. Cash has a very high threshold for ensuring safety and wellness for all. And so as of just a couple of days ago, the governor released that teachers and school staff are now able to receive the vaccine, and it was specific in his documentation on who specifically, as far as educators go, would be in that plan. And that's teachers, substitute teachers, school leaders, student teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff, as well as our contracted school district bus drivers. So that's the group right now that is in line to receive the vaccination if they so choose. I'm glad that I followed Mr. Weimer because, you know, he explained a lot of the PPE equipment that we've ordered. Again, safety is premium. We're working very closely with Say Yes with our mobile health units. We're exploring the possibility that they may be able even to provide the vaccine. We're looking into that. We're hopeful that that will be able to happen. They certainly are helping us with immunizations. As I shared earlier, we're working very closely with our medical directors, who are staying abreast on everything that's coming out. And our training with our nursing staff will be happening this week. We're very excited about that, so they will be ready. I just want to, in closing, assure you that everything that we're doing is aligned directly to the CDC, the New York State Department of Health, and what the Erie County Department of Health is requiring, recommending, and that's where we develop our guidelines from.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Excellent, as always. Mike, could you provide the next slide? And colleagues, let me just provide an introductory statement about this particular slide. These are the last set of slides. Staffing for return to in-person for large school districts is a challenge everywhere. And in our weekly conversations with the Council of Great City Schools districts, they say perhaps that is their greatest challenge, is consistent staffing, making sure that you do have your quality-first, first-line teachers available to teach if you're in person, and not being, having to go to a whole host of substitutes to teach the students once they come back. We said from the beginning that high-quality education begins with high-quality teachers. And if that is happening in remote, then that's a good thing. That's a good thing. But in-person, then, you can't have the lack of staffing become a big issue, and it can be a big issue. So we're doing things and taking steps to mitigate against that. It all begins with trust and staff believing that the schools will be able to open and reopen safely in person when that time comes. So that's what we've been doing. That's what our work has been all about, ensuring our families, our students, and our staff that we are prepared to reopen and to reopen safely. If everybody follows the rules, everybody does what they're supposed to do, we will have a safe reopening. But on the other hand, you can't, you can't just ask for staying remote, or "I want to be remote because of, and therefore why can't I?" And that's been a lot of the questions that we've been receiving from staff. And Jamie Warren, our Chief of Human Resources, has been doing an excellent job clarifying what the laws are around this and what our policy is about this. And it's very important to communicate this clearly and consistently. And she's here to help you understand how we've been messaging that to our staff, and she has an additional Q and A that she's prepared. After this meeting, depending on your questions as well, we'll send that out to you, and you can have that for your easy reference as well. But this is a high-level answer to some of those key questions. So Ms. Warren.
Good evening, Dr. Cash. Thank you, sir. And good evening, esteemed Board members. As we transition staff from primarily being remote to brick and mortar, HR is working with employees to support their return to work. So we all know since September, we have had the flexibility solely due to our students being remote to allow staff with such concerns as childcare issues, having employees, family members with underlying health conditions, or employees themselves perhaps having underlying health conditions. So while our students were remote, we were able to really accommodate. We had a two-day-a-week return schedule, but we worked very carefully when we could be kind, when we could be flexible, that's what we did. Dr. Cash provided a notice to all staff prior to Christmas break of our February 1st return. So we've already notified staff that the ADA, which is really a law that applies to the Americans with Disabilities Act, and when we say an accommodation and it falls under ADA, we just always want to be clear that what ADA protects and holds for. And what it is, is to give them an equal footing to be at work. It's not that you can be remote, because there's no legislation or contractual language that employees can be home. As public employees, we are supposed to report in person. So it's enabling a level playing field for them to be back at work. So after notifying employees about the Family First Coronavirus Response Act ending, that was a childcare paid leave provision. Once that ended on December 31st, we notified staff about not accommodating for childcare, and also ADA does not cover family members. So our work is to support employees who have shared that they have underlying health conditions that make them feel uncomfortable about returning to work. And like Dr. Cash shared, our interest is to promote the safety of all employees and all of our students. So speaking with them and their individual conversations to help them share with us what would help them be comfortable in returning is our goal. So part of our reopening plan addresses the safety of our schools, that collaboration among the cabinet and all district personnel to have the readiness of the facilities, to have the necessary PPE, to have the guidance about mask-wearing, about social distancing, use of technology to promote communication. All of those being put in place, employees are sharing with us what else their needs may be. And there are some employees that do have serious health conditions that we are accommodating based on their medical. It's a really interactive process, and that's the most important part about it, that we're really hearing for them, we're setting up the environment for them so that they can return. And we do have the instances of employees who may test positive for COVID. They automatically can work remotely. This is another way to stabilize staffing, and if they're asymptomatic, meaning not experiencing any symptoms, they can work remotely until they have a clearance or test positive, test negative, then they can return to work. Next slide, please. So I put up some of the answers to the questions that we're receiving, and it's very formal and it's clear information. And that's what we, like Dr. Cash, shared. We put out lots of communication. We update a frequently asked question and document with questions as they come in. My staff is having conversations all day with employees. We scheduled 10-minute individual conversations to talk to them about what their needs are and to be helpful and supportive of them. Next slide, please. So this slide refers to a staffing coverage plan. We're dynamic, we're so big, we have lots of.
Hold on, Jamie, hold on. Mike, next slide, please.
Thank you, sir. So this slide speaks to staffing coverage plan, because as a large district, we're constantly hiring. We have people who are promoting, we have people who are transferring, we have people who are retiring or separating. So we're always staffing, and you can see that from the monthly board changes. But when we talk about a staffing coverage plan, we're talking about how we're going to be ready to reopen for instances where we may have employees who need to take leaves of absence. We have seen statewide an increase in retirements due to COVID. So thinking ahead, Dr. Cash asked us to think of everything like just thinking ahead, how can we continuously and seamlessly provide coverage to our classrooms? And the substitute teacher training for all 800 of our active subs will take place on January 22nd and 29th. They can choose from one of those dates. And the training was detailed by our principals of what they would like the substitute teachers to be trained on. And not only are we doing that training, we've also created a library of online training. As Anne Bodichelli shared, unintended consequences is the ability to continuously train staff, even on their own time. So there's a library of resources for substitutes to participate in continuous training, and the principals have access to see which training they're participating in. We're also looking at our active temporary employees. These employees that we've hired previous, we're activating our temporary employees. These are employees who've covered leaves of absence for us previously. And during this time of remote, we've had less absenteeism and less people going out on leave. So these people haven't been employed this year. We reached out to them to see their interest to return them. It's much easier to activate than it is to newly hire. So this is a group of experienced people who we can ask to cover leaves that may be unanticipated. We're also looking at our student teachers, because we match them with our master teachers, and they have some really good experience and solid instructional practices. Onboarding them is going to be very helpful for coverage. And then we're always looking at our teacher aid and teacher assistance groups that have a really close relationship with our students, who, when the students see their face, they're happy to come to school, making sure that they're there to support the classrooms in any ways that they can, and continuously make sure those positions are stacked. And that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Right, and colleagues, just to show it's clear, when we say staffing coverage, this is in case the regular classroom teacher or staff have to go out because of COVID, quarantining, illness, and so forth. That, so this is when that happens, who are the people available that can help us provide coverage? All right. Excellent job, Ms. Warren. Next slide, please, Mike. Colleagues, this is one slide, brief but important in its substance. And I'd like Ms. McCullough, Ella McCullough, our Chief of Operations, to give you this slide, please. I'm sorry, Chief of Communications.
Yeah, I thought you promoted me without me knowing it. Good evening, Board members. Good to see you, everyone.
I was forced into it. Go ahead.
Yes, Michael, may I have the slide, please?
This is it.
I'm not seeing the communications slide on my screen, but I do have it here.
It's right out, it's right there.
Okay. As we continue to share information, two-way communication with families and caregivers. As, as we, as we continue to share information, two-way communication with families and caregivers, we still encourage families to be aware of their children's individualized school plans that are on the website. And along with that, we continue to send automated text, voice, and email messages to families in seven languages. The multilingual department has been wonderful in doing translations on the flip of a dime for us. We're still sending the weekly digital newsletters to keep everyone apprised of what's going on at the district level. Social media posts are on various platforms through Facebook, through Twitter. District letters and news stories go out to all of our families, as well as our media colleagues. We are, of course, getting television, radio, print, digital news coverage, because everyone is waiting to see, as we begin these phase-in plans, what we'll be doing. We have also the BPS telephone support hotline, which has been very busy, and people are getting answers when they need them. And we have a dedicated webpage on our district website that is being updated constantly and is there in the alerts. We've tried to make it as easy as possible for people to get where they need to on the website to get answers that they need.
And, okay, you've got it. Thank you, Ms. Calla. Excellent, as always, appreciate all of your good work in that area. And last but not least, Ms. Ebony Bullock has done a wonderful job getting, in a short time, getting acclimated to our district. And I just wanted to say a few words about the next slide, Mike. We, we haven't populated it yet, because we were still aggregating and disaggregating the data here, but we can make a few high-level points. Let me say about the Q and A, colleagues. I worked very closely with Darren, Dr. Darren Brown, to organize the questions and responses that many of you had received. Some of you as board members had sent in to us, and, you know, they've been coming from staff and so forth. And we tried to get the high-level, most important of those questions addressed in pretty good detail. And so we sent that out to you before the meeting started, and you should have, have those Q and As with you at this time. After our discussion tonight, please feel free to share those Q and A responses with your colleagues, your constituents, put them on your social media platforms, however you'd like to share this data. That would be, that was the purpose of putting it together in this, in this format for you. So feel free to do that, but wait till the end of the meeting in case we need to clarify some points there. All right. We're ready to start the discussion. And Vice President Petrucci, President Kotman, staff and I are here, and we turn the meeting back over to you. Pull up the facial, face slides, there we go, and let's, let's proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much for the presentation, very informative. At this point, I'd like to open it up to questions. So if anybody wants to raise their hand, let me know, I'll go in the order that people raise their hand. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to start with Larry Scott, since Larry is here and his hand was physically raised in front of me. Mr. Scott, the floor is yours.
That's the way you get to be first. Good job, Larry. You risked your life doing that. Go ahead.
Point, and then I have a few questions. And it goes to the COVID-19 data. Clearly, there remains concern all over the country and locally with COVID-19 and what it's doing to our community. But I will say that over the past few days, in Erie County alone, we are seeing a drop in the positivity rate. Today, it was 5.9%, and seven-day is at 6.4% for the average over seven days. And also seeing from that data that the county executive has shared, and the Department of Health, that the city of Buffalo is, I hate to say, it's not accurate to say that we're doing better, we're not doing as bad as, as some of the other areas in Erie County. So I, I think I'm feeling a little more confident or comfortable with us beginning a slow phase-in of in-person for the groups that we've identified. I think there was a lot of important information that was shared tonight, and I think answers many questions that staff have. I am right now living the hybrid model in, in my daily work in Kenton with secondary students, and so I'm experiencing it firsthand what it's like. I've actually facilitated some simultaneous in-person, remote, social emotional lessons, and I see, I saw firsthand the immense challenge that that presents to teachers having to do that on a daily basis. So I empathize with and commend our teachers that are being called on to adapt and innovate once again in the midst of this crisis. What I'm wondering, you know, Ms. Calla kind of laid out the macro communication plan. A lot of these questions keep coming up from teachers, from parents, about transportation, about hygiene, about sanitizing buildings, and we've answered a lot of it tonight. On a micro level, what is the process for us to clearly communicate all of these protocols for when we start February 1st? Are there going to be, for example, mandatory meetings by building principals with staff? So all the staff are aware of what it's going to be like when they return in February?
So I'm going to say a few words about it, and then Darren, you can come in if you've understood Mr. Scott's question there, the latter part of his question. Colleagues, the first thing, let me say this, in an enterprise this large and this complex, there will always be questions and questions and questions. You can have questions till, till the end of the school year about things. We've tried to be, turn that into a positive and say, look, we're going to answer as many as we can. And then some of this, you'll have to figure out and pound on it once we start. Because as you know, if you've already started, Larry, all of the answers weren't predetermined. You had to get in and, and work on it and figure some things out and make adjustments and, and some. So for example, we've had about 100 questions on the isolation room alone. And I've said, look, we've answered all we can, I found an isolation room. You need to have it, the kids need to be supervised in it, and you need to have people be with face masks and, and safety equipment and so forth, right nearby, either just outside with an open door or just inside with, with, with a closed door. But whatever it is, they have to be supervised. Now beyond that, you, each school can figure, can figure out how that's going to work. Okay? And we leave some flexibility there. Because until we do it, we, we, we don't know, we can't answer all that. The second thing I would say is, all of the associates have developed another document, which has many, many more questions than this big bucket one that I shared with you that you said was helpful. But we have another one, and it has a whole lot of little questions, that we're trying to frame that up and sharpen that up for tomorrow afternoon, because we have another meeting with our principals tomorrow, both the elementary and the high school principals. So Darren, if you could pick it up from there and pick up, I'm not sure, the, the board needs to answer all of the questions for, for staff and for principals. I think that would be a little bit outside of your bandwidth. But I do think, Darren, we plan meetings, we plan, you know, principals are going to be having these, these meetings with their staff, so forth and so on. So if you could pick up from there, I do think it was a good question.
Absolutely. So we already know that principals have had meetings with their faculty and staff, and that's where many of the questions were generated from. So as Dr. Cash mentioned, there is another document with over approximately 90 questions and answers that we will be releasing tomorrow. We have an all principal meeting scheduled for tomorrow. The associates of school leadership have set that up, so we can go through some of those questions also. And we've also encouraged principals to have meetings with their families in their buildings, smaller community meetings, so that their families can ask building-specific questions. So again, principals have met with their faculty, it's generated questions, they've met and/or have scheduled meetings with their families also. We find that to be very important. Now, Dr. Cash didn't mention a couple of weeks ago that we would be setting up, similar to what we did before over the summer, those, those Facebook Live meetings, just so we can also talk to the community and the families that might not be able to make one of those other meetings. All we ask of our families, our teachers, our constituents, is that we don't have the death by what if, because we can get buried in what if this, what if that. So we're trying to make sure we have structured responses to the questions and identify the procedures and practices we have in place already.
Thank you. My next question, and Ms. Baricelli I think did a good job on how or what the hybrid model could look like. And the question that keeps coming to me is, how will remote, full remote instruction potentially change for students, if at all? And if, you know, when we begin hybrid, will the schedule change? Will the asynchronous synchronous change? Or maybe some of that's still to be determined, but what might change in the daily schedule that currently is set up for our students that are full remote?
So Mr. Scott, it will definitely vary by building. At the secondary level, many of them are maintaining the same schedule that the students are already on. So it would, I would assume it would also remain the same for the remote learners. But the ASLs are here, and they can clarify some of that. Elementary, they may have to make minor modifications to the internal schedule, but the approximate amount of time that students are doing synchronous and asynchronous should remain relatively the same. But again, the ASLs may want to speak specifically to that.
Toya, do you want to say anything for high school? I think one of the things you should mention to the board is the emphasis we're placing on max flexibility, particularly for our seniors, and say some things about that. And then Cassandra, if you would be ready, maybe to say a few words about the effort to not have it change radically, but to keep it as, as similar to what it is in remote as possible. So Toya, you heard.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, board members. So I, we, we've worked very closely with principals in their thinking around schedules. And we really wanted to emphasize to them that as much as possible, we want the schedules to remain the same. So the teachers, as much as possible, remain the same, as much as possible synchronous and asynchronous time remain the same for, for our students. And so that when you look at the secondary schedule, the flexibility was put in place by adding the learning lab to support that work, to make sure that teachers remain the same, and the, the ability to be flexible with the seniors. So we've come up with a series of options that the secondary principals use to drive their work. It was all based on the discussions we had prior to the, the last holiday break, in which we really wanted to stay very flexible and continue to use data to drive how we scheduled, for example, the seniors. So you'll see that flexible scheduling happening across the board, where you'll have some seniors who have identified, who have been identified to be there all five days, because they're in that neediest group. Some schools were able to extend that for seniors based on that was the group that they selected, their seniors, and so they were able to extend it to the whole grade based on their size for five days. Coupled with the, the two-day-a-week and the one-day-a-week rotation, and all of that is driven by data. So they, they use the facility data they had, they use student achievement data, they use everything that we have at our fingertips to make that determination, to come up with which rotation works best for their school community, all with the effort to make sure that the teachers remain the same. So that's for remote as well as in-person.
All right. That was helpful. Cassandra, how about same thing to Larry's question for the elementary?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Cash, and happy new year, board members. So I want you to know that the principals work very closely with the data that they receive from their parents and communities and their teachers. And they realize that relationships and routines are critical, particularly with our pre-K through two learners, our youngest learners. They knew that parents wanted to make sure that their child maintained the same teacher they have right now, to the greatest extent possible, should they go back to brick and mortar, or even if they decided to stay in the online learning community. So the vast majority of the schedules will remain intact with the students maintaining the same teacher that they had during online session when we go back to the phase-in model. Anne did a really good job discussing the concurrent instructional model. That is the model that the teachers will be utilizing so that they can engage their children, whether they are sitting face-to-face or they are at home on the laptop with a parent. So to answer your question in short, Mr. Scott, yes, to the greatest extent possible, the vast majority of their children will have the same teacher that they had during the time when we were 100% online for online instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Two more questions, and then I'll be done. Are we, is there any concern in any of our buildings? Well, first of all, do we have a sense of how many students are returning, how many students are going to stay full remote from the survey, the forms that were completed? And along with that, are there any buildings where there's concern about space? I've heard from a couple of buildings that there's a high percentage of students returning, and they're concerned about having enough space for those students.
Okay. Excellent question. Let me try to answer it, because that data is fresh and it's still, it's still fluid. But as of today, Larry, I would say this, at the high school level, four, let's see, two out of five seniors and their families have said that they would not wish to return, two out of five, about 42%. And then the rest would come back in a flex. And both groups want this flexible schedule approach, because a lot of them are saying they, they've got to work now. They, they've started to work, they need to continue to work, and they want to have flexible hours. So they're not opting out of school, it's just to make sure that the schedule's flexible. So that's at the high school level. At the elementary level, at this point, for all, if we get to all, and it's going to be a challenge to get to all, but there's about eight, almost 9,000 students who have opted out overall. And in the pre-K level, though, three out of four say they want to come back, pre-K to two, pre-K to two. So in that group, only 26% have said they want to opt out. At this point, based on surveys and based on principals calling all of that population at their schools. So that's encouraging, that from a month or two ago, at least at that level, they seem to have agreed that that's, those younger kids need to be back as soon as possible. So we're, so the way I read that data of 26% is that three out of four want to come back, of the ones that are in that, in that continuum. Okay? Now, another big number, over 1,000, actually over 1,100, have said they won't need transportation, and they want to come back as well. So this, this plus the fact that all staff are being required to report is putting a, a premium and a crunch on available space. And, 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 you know, we didn't know for sure, but we know we couldn't go much past that. Remember I said something about the 10,000 mark? But that was the whole system. And then we talked about plus staffing. So you, it was at five plus five about a month ago. Well, we've gone past that now, it looks like, it sounds like, with this new survey result. So many, many. So many, many schools are concerned, and we won't know until we pressure test it, but they are concerned that if we start talking, we cannot say right now, is my point, that in two weeks after that, and then two weeks after that, you see what I mean, we're going to be doing three plus four, and then five and six, and then seven and eight. We won't know that until well after the February break about what our capacity is and what we can, what that space can tolerate, and how much it's going to cost to add additional staffing, bus routes, so forth and so on. There's a big, big unknown cost that, that is not budgeted for and is not funded by any, by the state, that the more we try to bring back and phase in, the more challenges we're going to have. So this is an at-max effort in this phase one right now. We'll see what it looks like, we'll pound on it, and, and then we'll know where we need to go from there. And it may mean adjustments, though, back to what some of the concerns are. When you, because then if you, you have to be hybrid, absolutely, right? You can't have everybody coming in. And that five-day-a-week thing may have to go away for the highest needs students. But at least we'll get some assessment of where they are during these first several weeks from an assessment standpoint. And then we have to make adjustments. So that's the best I can tell you. It, it, it looks encouraging for the pre-kated two in terms of, there aren't a lot of people. I thought it would be flipped almost, you know, that most would opt out and then only a few would want to come in, particularly the way the virus is raging. But it doesn't appear to be the case for the pre-kated two. Now, the seniors, it's a little different, as I say, because they need that flexibility. But we'll still keep a close, a close tab on every single one of them. Is that helpful, Larry?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And one more question and then I'm done. Vaccinations are here. And it's been, it's been the late, the, the way it's been, you know, it's being administered is just chaos right now.
Right.
There are a lot of staff that want to get vaccinated. Is there any opportunity for the districts to work with the Department of Health to organize, maybe with our mobile health clinics, access to vaccines, rather than them just trying to, you know, get lucky with an appointment in the community?
Yeah, that's crazy. It's all over the place. You're right. I've got friends in other states and they tell me they're already vaccinated. I said, gee, how did that happen? But anyway, I, I am encouraged that we've been moved up to 1B. I've, I've asked Dr. Quo to report on this next Wednesday, Larry, because what I asked him yesterday is if he could see, if he could forget some, and I asked for it directly. I would like special dispensation for our teachers and our administrative team to start. And that's, I told him the number, that's 4,000. We need 4,000 vaccinations right now to administer to all of our teachers and all of our administrators. And, and then we can go from there. He said he's going to work on that, but he first has to figure out how many vaccinations are coming into the state, because they first come into the state at a certain number and then they get deployed out to these different regions and places around the state. So he's looking into that right now. And I'm hopeful we can move ahead of the line. I don't want to skip over people because healthcare workers, to me, are still the first people. But I do think that if you want us to open school and, and you want us to open the largest school in Western New York and the second largest in the state, then you've got to give us some consideration to help our staff and families feel safe. And so that's how I've been pushing it, that's how I've been framing it, whether I'm talking to Lieutenant Governor Kathy Hochul, who was helpful in getting us those 9,000 test kits. She said, Dr. Cash, how many do you need? And I told her, we need 9,000 to start and then we'll need 10,000, you know, every two, three weeks after that. So we can get some help if we can get that special dispensation for our teaching. And I've also asked the union, the BTF, to put pressure wherever pressure can be applied and to help get their staff, you know, their membership vaccinated efficiently and quickly. So we're coming at it from a number of angles and I'm hopeful we can move ahead in the line. Because otherwise, Larry, we're going to be looking at several months before this thing gets done for frontline educator staff.
Great, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Such an important topic. It's the bells over at St. Anthony's, Dr. Cash. Vaspers. So I just want to make sure that on such an important topic, all my fellow board members have the opportunity to speak. So I'm going to go by the order in which I see on my screen that they've called in. So next we would have Terrence Hurd, followed by President Kotman. So Terrence, the floor is yours, followed by Sharon.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm happy new year.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and for, for other members of the cabinet, for your extensive report, a very great PowerPoint presentation and, and a lot of work that was put into it about the future of our district. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to try to make them short questions, so they can be short answers. But is there a report of how many students that, that had the COVID virus since March 14th of last year? Is there any data on that? I know you said, you said that there's a lot of lacking data on children and the COVID virus.
Yeah, there's 2.3 million cases, I believe, in this country as a whole. And I believe there's 520 in Buffalo since November 1st. 520.
520. And, and we know that that's reported data.
Reported data, right.
Right, I remember, Board Member Larry read some information about, about the data earlier when he first asked his question. But that's the reported data. And a lot of that we find unreported.
That's right.
Okay, do we have report also on our staff members within our district?
Yes. Jamie, do you have a write-up to date? Last time we talked in our one-on-one, we were like at 81. Is it higher now?
Yes, sir. We are up to 150 of our staff members testing positive for COVID.
Double, yeah.
Well, prayer for everybody to recover. Thank you. One question about, about returning to school. I know that, that earlier we stated that if a child, you know, opt to come back to school, that we want them to continue with the full plan. What if a child don't feel comfortable, you know, after coming to school? After, you know, doing a flex plan and returning to school? Or a child and their family don't feel comfortable coming back once entered back into the flex plan?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand. Darren, do you know, I'm not sure I understand that question.
So students, if they don't feel comfortable with remaining on in-person instruction, will have the opportunity to then return to remote, to complete remote instruction. The only difficulty is vice versa. If a student, a parent decide to remain on remote instruction after it has started, it's difficult to then plan for them to return to school because of the class sizes the schools have planned for. But if they're in-person instruction and then decide to go back to remote instruction, we can accommodate that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Brownhall. I had the opportunity of spending the last two days with Dr. Fatima Morel in her presentation for the Student Perspective and Voice and District Personality sessions. Wonderful, wonderful. And Dr. Morel is actually conducting a list of the questions that the children have made. So that should be sent to the district pretty soon. And I have, I have a list also that I've written. Our children have a lot of concerns about returning back to the classroom. And it was good to hear them, you know, speak out, you know, about situations and, and, you know, what other children are doing, you know, their friends or, you know, they, they see on social media that they're doing. There's a lot of kids out partying right now. There's a lot of kids that's out of, you know, visiting or, it wasn't much, it was, I didn't hear any reports about kids not wearing masks, though. But they're, you know, they're doing kid stuff. You know, it's been a long time since they've been in the educational system, been in an educational classroom. So, so I'm looking forward to see how the district responds to that report and how we can, you know, you know, ease some of the challenges that, that our childrens have, you know. It's, it's coming back into a classroom and to, to a closed environment along with our teachers, you know. There's challenges there also, you know. There might be some type of emotional stability, you know, that comes with that. So let's, let's just keep an eye on that. Also, another question is.
Terrence, did I say, Terrence, Mr. Hurd, let me, let me say this about that, because that's an important point about how the kids may be coming back to us. We haven't seen them in, in 10 months or so and there's a lot been going on in their life. So one, I want to commend Fred Wagstaff, for example, and members of the BPD, Chief Young, Chief Kelly. They came to me and asked for support in some training, specialized training, where they focus on intervention, prevention, trauma-informed care. They even asked for some of the work that Dr. Morel does to come and be trained in CLRI, come and be trained in social-emotional learning. So some of Tang's staff have gone. He's asked all of that for his resource officers and his security team. I just thought that was very visionary on his part to, to be aware that when these kids come back, we don't want to just be, and we work in collaboration with the BPD on this. We don't want to just be, you know, handcuffing, transporting and fingerprinting kids all over the place because there are things kids are acting out or, you know, they're having, they haven't been able to, 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 to get the support, the resources and the, and the time to settle back into what has to be, of course, a very structured setting. That's what school is. So my point is, to your point, that there is peripheral training going on as well as classroom teacher training and so forth, to try to make sure we, we're compassionate and, and give tough love to these kids when they, when they come back.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cash, and thank you, Security Officer Weinstein, Wag Black, for overseeing that. Another concern that I have is, since last year, a lot of our seniors and juniors have started working and they schedule around, around the classroom. And a lot, a lot of them are actually, you know, handed in work and after the classroom because it, you know, there's a conflict between work and school. I just want to make sure that we have a plan that we can recapture those kids. Once, once a child starts making money or, or, you know, for, for, for some reasons, you know, is it to help with feeding their families because their mother or father may be unemployed or, or, or help buying clothes for their brothers and sisters or whatever the situation is, that, that they don't be isolated out or, or not graded, graded differently because they are working. And, and we understand, you know, you know, once you start working, you know, you're out into the real world now. Just, just to make sure that we can try to recapture those kids, you know, and more social-emotional support for them to come back into the classroom, make sure they continue with their work. So if it's a class or a teacher working after hours to help with those, those children, then we can support that.
I believe we are. And certainly we'll say more about it as we, as we begin to, to, to see what it looks like on a, on a real-time basis when we restart. We are, we're fully in that, Darren. Isn't that your understanding? Yeah.
Yeah.
Flexible scheduling for those who work.
Okay, thank you.
I was working with the secondary principals on that also, Dr. Cash.
Okay, thank you.
And my next question is for Mrs. Ann Bonnichelli. She, she mentioned about teachers flip-flopping, working in the classroom and also working online at the same time. I do have a concern, one of our parents talked about, how can a kid give instruction at the same time when the teacher will have a mask on in the classroom? So it'd be kind of hard for whoever's online, you know, to receive the exact same instruction. You can't see the movement of the lips or the mouth or.
Well, the teacher would have the mask on in front of both students, both groups. So they would both be at the same advantage or disadvantage in terms of the mask because they can't remove it. So they, the students in front of them as well as at home would see the teacher with the mask. When we're trying to teach phonemic awareness at the lower grades, it is important that you can see the teacher's mouth. So we have two solutions for that. Well, three potentially. We're looking into masks that have a clear mouth. That one is still, I think we're trying to, to work on. But we are also going to film and provide a few videos for the early lessons so that the phonemic awareness lesson is pre-taped for teachers, so they can play it instead of, because the teacher can't remove her mask. So if she plays the video of the lesson, the kids can see what she would have been, you know, what she would be teaching them. We're also investigating licenses for the Hegarty program, which provides taped lessons. And we're very hopeful that we'll be able to secure those very soon. So then teachers will have a whole library of the phonemic awareness lessons that we use in school. So they won't have to remove their mask. They'll be able to teach the lessons by using the video.
Okay. I just know that if all of us right now on the Zoom-type platform had a mask on, it would be kind of difficult to relate to one another. And just taking that same aspect into a classroom and the cognitive learning of a child, or even a high school student, it might be a little difficult to, you know, the attention span might decrease or just the abilities to relate to the, to the person that's giving instruction.
It's, it's a challenge, Mr. Hurd, but it's, it's one we're going to have to work through given the safety issues around it. We're going to have to make a Solomon's choice, you know. But we'll work through it because for certain groups, as we said, they do need to see, and we need to see, see their mouths when they're trying to enunciate or pronounce. But other schools are doing it all over the, all over the country. So we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll go by best practice.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more questions and I'll be done. One, one other thing I'm concerned about, the, the, the long time exposure to chemicals for our children and adults. The constant uses of sanitary materials, the chemicals that we're using and, and kids may touch their face and eyes or get into the skins and pores. Have any, any studies or have you talked to Dr. Quo about that also? Are children to be wearing gloves inside the classroom or?
I know this sanitizer, this sanitizer that we use here to clean everything, that is a super sanitizer. It take your fingerprints right off. So I always wear gloves when, when I use it. And I don't, but I don't think that's what children and others are going to be using. That's mainly our maintenance and facility staff. But I do think the issue of exposure, that's why ventilation and, and other things are going to be important. I haven't seen the studies. There may be some available colleagues. If you know of any, share them with me as quickly as possible so that we can add them into our planning matrix around that. Jim, have you heard about anything with regard to chemical exposure for students and staff? Unmute, Jim. Jim, you're muted.
Sorry about that. We have, we have the District Director of Safety on the, on the call here, Yvette Gordon.
Ah, great.
Who will not allow any type of chemical or anything that isn't allowed use in schools into our building. So Yvette, if you can hear me, you may want to join in and just give us an update on that.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Cash.
How you doing?
Staff and board members. We have been working very diligently on making sure that we provide something that is safe but also gets the job done as well as disinfecting. A lot of the, the electrostatic spraying and those other operations are done, you know, in the evenings when there aren't people in the building. We have been in touch with our, the manufacturer of the products as well as our distributor of the products. We've looked at safety data sheets. And while there are certain requirements for people who are applying the disinfectant that is done by the custodial staff, they have the appropriate personal protective equipment. We are making sure that the products, like wipes and things like that are, that are used, are not necessarily used by students but can be used by staff in the classroom to, to wipe down surfaces. We don't see any toxicity issues with the products that we are currently using.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. I'm sorry, the last question pertaining to, to this type of safety is, we have, we have children that comes from poorer families and they might wear clothing items, you know, repetition, a pair of pants. wear clothing items, you know, repetition, a pair of pants a couple of days or a shirt or something like that, or even coats, wearing coats every day that can transfer the COVID. Is there any plan or any, any way to address that? I know that's, you know, that's a large, that's a larger issue. But if you're wearing the same clothing or something daily and it could be transmitting the disease across.
Hmm. That's, that's interesting. I'm not sure that I'm qualified to answer that. I don't, I don't know how long it stays on, on clothing. I know that they've told healthcare workers that, what was the length that they said, don't, let's see. They got to stay in separate rooms, I think. You know, they used to come and take off the clothing right away and put it in the washer, but even that's become an issue now. So you're on to an interesting point, but I don't have an answer for it. Who would be qualified to say something about that? Maybe Dr. Quo? Can we save that question for him? See what he can get, see if he can get that to us tomorrow. We have another meeting tomorrow, Darren, with him, and we'll ask him that question. Could you make a note of it, Darren?
Um, sure. Just, just one question with transportation, and that is, would our children only be riding the special buses or would they be riding the community metro buses?
Which ones? The high school or the elementary? Two different groups?
The high school group.
Cheryl, I believe it's the metro, but if you could answer that, Cheryl, for us.
So all of the metro buses, there will be specials in all, into all of the school buildings, but for the most part, all of the metro buses are, are available for any member of the public to ride as well.
Okay, so they'll be mixing them with public, and the sanitation standards will still be the same?
But again, the capacity on the metro buses will be reduced as well.
Okay. And my last question is, I know we, I know during the presentation, we talked about our administrative staff members, and we talked about teachers that are reporting to the buildings, and also we started with teacher aides and substitute teachers. What about volunteers that worked through our district throughout the, throughout the years? Do they mean volunteer ability in the side of the building?
I think Nate advised no on that. Well, I'm, I'm not, Darren, what is the, what is the answer on that? Because we do have a number of volunteers.
That, that was a no, only because in speaking with building principals also, we want to really reduce the number of people that are in and out of our school buildings and have the possibility of bringing in COVID, you know, in an asymptomatic way. So we want to reduce that. And I, as a parent, I don't want individuals in and out of the school buildings that my children may be in. So at, at this point in time, we are not going to do volunteers in the school building.
But we do have another accredited volunteers have been working with our children. Our children do look up to them. Is there some type of other way, like in, like in, like on a Zoom call or anything like that, they can still interact with them?
Yeah. What, what I would suggest, Mr. Hurd, honestly, is let us get this return underway. Let us get instruction, you know, especially with teachers teaching remotely and to students who are in the classroom. Let us get all that worked out before we start figuring out how to incorporate volunteers. Let's, you know, how do you, you know, eat an elephant one bite at a time? Let's focus on what we can right now, and then we'll try to tackle that volunteer question, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you. Thank you for all those good questions. I certainly think one-to-one mentoring parents, that should continue. And the way that should continue is by phone or by Zoom. You know, I, I don't want to discourage the good folks who are trying to mentor and volunteer in that kind of capacity. But as far as coming to the school building, we really got to keep that paired down in this, in this early going.
Dr. Cash, I'd just say one more thing about our student voices and like ABK program. Our, our students are, are reflecting that, you know, that loss of companionship with the coaches. You know, the coaches are the biggest inspirations, you know, inside our buildings to some of our children. It's the reason why they come to school. It's the reason why, you know, they study or do work. And so, you know, it's, it's a building block towards higher education for a lot of our kids. And, you know, they, they haven't been, you know, in that contact, you know, with the virtual learning system that we had now of those coaches and those people that inspire them. So if we can somehow try, as we tackle volunteers, to try to, try to bring that, that path back together again, so they can have contact or, or visual contact and.
Yeah, virtually, I've always been supportive of that, virtually. I'll certainly bring it up with Cecily. She's probably on the line. But they, you know, coaches should be reaching out, should be talking and mentoring and encouraging and, and doing a whole host of things online after school. You know, that, that, that hasn't, that hasn't stopped or shouldn't have stopped. What we can't do is the in-person, the practicing, and of course, the competition at this time. But continuing to work with your kids and reach it, your coaches, they have a green light for me to do that.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Hurd. Next up, we have President Sharon Kotman, followed by Board Member Jen McCosey.
Thank you. I do have some questions. His first question is probably to, and I want to thank the staff for the work that they've done. It's extensive, and I can tell you guys have put a lot of work into it. I appreciate that. And it, it, it's always going to be some what-ifs. So we know that, Dr. Cash, and we know we're not going to be able to make everyone happy either.
That's right.
I can tell that a lot of work has gone into this to try. My first question, it goes to Anne Bette Chely, and basically the IT department. You stated that you, you see that teachers are using the technology, the NearPod, School, Schoolology, et cetera, more often. Do we have a report that tells us what, what schools and what teachers are utilizing those reports so that we can gauge the advantage of those reports? Or is this just, people are just doing willy-nilly and nobody's monitoring what percentage of each class, what school is doing what? You know what I mean? Just trying to.
I don't want to speak on behalf of IT, but I know we can always pull usage reports for Schoology and teams, or Schoology at least. But it's impossible to offer the synchronous instruction without using Teams. So I think it's a pretty safe bet that anyone who's providing it is using both Schoology and Teams to work with the students. And then the other ones, individually, we could pull usage reports for the other.
I really wish that someone was looking at usage reports. I really do. Because utilizing, I mean, we have the technology to do it, and it's a tool, excellent tool. And it turns out that if some schools are using it more than other schools, then we need to have conversations as to why. And so for me, it's about the data, being able to drive the instruction. And if we're not using reports to do that, that, that's a concern. And I just really want to see that we are using reports.
I think that's a great idea. So Myra, we probably are to some extent, but Myra, let me have you say something about it. And then ASLs, I want you to hear me. I want you to then be monitoring these reports with your principals to make sure that we, we're getting full and efficient utilization out of these technology tools. Because they, they are, we've done a lot of training. We've invested a lot. And it only so good is, is if we use it. Because we had talked about that being an OFE at one point as well. So Myra and Anne, if you could continue this just a little bit, because it's important.
Okay. So earlier, the earlier part of last year, the governor was asking for weekly data, and we were providing information about Schoology usage, unique Schoology logins for the students, how many assessments were submitted, how many are taken, how many assignments were submitted. And likewise, the teacher's side, we were providing how many teacher assessments were created and teacher assignments were created. So we can get that information. We also get, or able to get usage information on NearPod and some of the other instructional technology tools that we, we use. We are dependent or reliant on the vendor in a lot of cases to give us that information. But we can definitely get what is available to us through partnerships with the vendors to try to make that information available to our ASLs and, and any of the stakeholders that want and need to receive it.
So, can I add? I'm sorry. We actually do often monitor usage. In fact, because I didn't think our ZERN usage was as high as I would like to see it, we worked with the company. They came in and did some training today with all the elementary administrators and specifically addressed usage reports because we know what a wonderful tool that is. And I'm sure we will continue to see increases based on the principal's new understanding of how they can go in personally and monitor that data.
I, I would love to know more about, see more about that because that ties into equity as well. It really does. Making sure that, that we're spending a lot of money on resources, making sure that it gets used. There are, are different, Myra and Anne, there are different technology reports out there or supports out there that will allow a teacher to do synchronous and asynchronous at the same time in a classroom. I wonder if we have looked into that, and that. One of them is Tiger Stand by Ink Lab. Have we looked into that? Because if we're saying that hybrid or virtual learning has changed forever, this would give the teacher the opportunity to have both the children who are at home as well as the children who are in the classroom at the same time, which would help, you know, help that. And I was wondering, since we're talking about, since COVID has occurred and we're talking about that learning, the way we teach our children has changed forever, particularly what I'm being told by many of the high school, is that some children are doing much better because they don't have peer pressure, and they don't have the bullying and all sorts of things going on in the, in their environment. So I was just wondering if we could possibly start ourselves in that direction. I am assuming that there will be additional money available that's coming under the new administration that may afford us the opportunity to do that. Because other districts are doing it, and they're having great success with it, okay? And so, anything like that?
Yeah, that's what, well, Anne, but here the question, because that's, that's what we've been talking about, is what are the practices that are emerging, emerging as best practices to be able to teach synchronously and asynchronously? I mean, this is a challenge for higher education. This is a challenge for lower education, for pre, you know, and all the levels in between. Is that in order to keep your student base and in order to keep, keep your institution alive, you're going to have to become facile and adept at both. And what, and what you said is you're going to provide more training. In fact, the training is already started, right?
We've done some TOT work with our coaches, and we are getting ready to release two additional PDs, I believe, next week, the, between the 18th and 20th. And we've already done a lot of different training, for example, on Office 365, so students can work concurrently on the same document. So a lot of those shared collaborative opportunities are embedded in some of the materials that we have already. I will say I'm not familiar with the particular one, Mrs. Kotman.
I think that's what you were saying. But we can find out about that. What I heard from.
Been looking it up. I've been looking at it since we've talked here. I'm very impressed with it.
You could share it with us, Sharon. But what I.
Happy to put it, send it out.
The point is, Anne, this is happening all over the world. It's happening all over the world. And we can capture video, we can capture segments for different subject matter to see how these teachers are doing it and how they're doing it effectively. And that's what principals and teachers want to see. That's what they're anxious about because once again, they're going to have to learn some new tools and skills in a relatively short time. So even if you used other districts, that's why, you know, we call Tino, Tino, you have some teachers that are knocking it out, doing it both ways, you know. Then we can start to build our own videos. When teachers get the hang of this, there'll be some to catch on quicker than others, right? And then we'll start to video them and share that with other colleagues. That, that's what this is about. We got to get in there quickly. Because what's going to happen if we don't show that it can be done, it, the resistance will set in. And, and then we'll get way behind and there'll be, be business as usual. So try to, try to, try to hear what was being asked, and let's get out there and show, yes, this can be done. Yes, this actually has to get done. It has to get done.
And, and, and Hurst has, and Hurst is currently using it in, in at least three or four of their classrooms, and you have Kenesha's College using it. And my reason for bringing that, my reason for bringing that up is that when we start talking about our AP courses, this will also allow us to expand that exposure with those as well.
Yeah.
Our children will be able to expand and take additional courses. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Right. And, and Sharon, on the other end, when students get suspended, and we're trying to cut down on, we don't want to start there. But you know, in the normal day, kids get suspended or expelled, or even if they're sick for a long time or have to be out for a long time, for whatever reason, we can keep them engaged. We can keep them still engaged with this, with this remote capability now. So there's no reason for any child ever again to, to just fall in the cracks, you know, and, and get behind or, or become so far out of it that, that, that the school has, you know, can't catch them up. I think we've crossed and turned a corner where we'll always be able to catch kids up if they put the effort in, if they put the effort in.
No, I, I, Dr. Cash, just very quickly, because I know when Mrs. Kotman said that Anne Hurst was using it in three or four classrooms, and the reason districts may use it on a very limited basis is because it is very expensive per classroom. It's over $1,000 per classroom. And in a regular school building, that's over $50,000, $60,000 per school. So we were looking at items that schools can purchase to receive the same result. That's the reason why we didn't participate with Ink Labs right now, knowing that if we did something like that, we need to do RFP anyway. And that's why we stayed away from just any specific company. But we are familiar with Mrs. Kotman.
Yeah, but you know what? For you, you feel that $1,000 is important. And I'm worried about a child not being, not being engaged, or we're losing children, and that's worth more than $1,000 to me.
Oh, no. Please don't, 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 please don't say that, because that is absolutely not correct. And I'm, I'm very insulted that that would even be brought up. What I'm saying is, is that the $1,000 was the price point that we saw, and we're trying, we're trying to achieve the same without doing that because it would require RFP. So we're on the same page, trying to receive the same result. And we will be looking at the best practices in all districts about how we can, you know, make sure we get the education to our students in the best way possible.
You would do that, and I did not intend to offend you at all. That was not my intent point. But I do feel that at desperate times, desperate measures need to be had. And if we have some children that need, you know, some extras, extra help and.
Yeah, we agree. We agree. What I'm going to do, this is part of the stimulus request. So when there's new stimulus, we're, the council and I, you know, great city schools, we're very clear on what we need and why we need it. And these are unbudgeted items, but they are pandemic schooling-related costs. So that's where we need this help and this support. So we agree that it should, that we need these kinds of tools. We want to be what everybody else has. We, we need that for our children. But we just have to, we have to, we do have to put in, in our checkbooks, you know, exactly how much everything is going to cost.
Just stand.
Or else M&amp;T going to keep charging you that $35 fee for insufficient funds. So we just have to, you know, we, we, we.
We're going to get some of our interest from the city. So we're going to have some extra money, okay? We're going to get some of that.
Ah, there you go.
Okay, so I have this, because no one mentioned that teachers would be, or staff would be doing a sign-in sheet daily. Other buildings I've been going in and including the ones, Salamanca or whatever, there was a sign-in sheet that basically said, have you been exposed to someone with COVID? Have you been in this? Et cetera, et cetera. And every day, when the teachers came in, they had to sign it and they had to check, okay, confirming that they have not been exposed to COVID. Said, are we working with, with that first of all? Are we working with county in regards to tracing? Jamie Smith said that she had a hundred, she knew that 150 teachers had COVID. Is that because they reported to us or is it because of tracing going on through the, I know the state is tracing and I know Erie County is also working with them.
All right. There's a couple of things in there. Darren, you answer what you can, and then Jamie can answer her part, okay?
Absolutely. So our school building is.
Absolutely, so our school buildings do require that also, Mrs. Cotton. So when our teachers, our staff, anyone entering the building, they do fill out that form and some of our schools actually, not some of them. But it is available online also so that teachers can fill that out and so that is done daily when individuals enter the school building. And we have received information from Erie County, we even checked with some of our principals, our principals are notified. When they have staff members that that test positive and I know that information is then shared with Jamie Warren and H R. Because there is a process that Jamie has put in place with H R that must be followed when we find out that a staff member is COVID positive.
Regarding contact tracing.
Absolutely, contact, contact tracing and notification.
And the other thing, Sharon, we do, President Cotton, we're taking temperatures every day of everybody.
Right, I know that.
Yeah, okay.
We still have the the line available for parents to ask questions that we had this summer. Are we still doing that or is staff answering those questions?
Yes, absolutely.
So there is the same number still out there?
Eight one six seventy one hundred, I believe.
Okay, good, I just wanted.
Help line, Eleanor, if I'm correct, you said someone who mans that helpline, they said we used to have this many. And that's come down to here, who can say something about that? The number of calls in terms of reducing or expanding again? Who can say that, is that Eleanor or who would say that, talk to that, Darren?
I'm trying to think because I'm not sure who who looks at the those numbers, so I'm not sure who.
I think Eleanor told me.
I haven't seen a phone on those, what I can tell you is that I'm at the end of that line, I'm miscellaneous. So anyone who is pressing the button for their call, it comes to me. And then I wrote those on, the I T calls have gone way down since the beginning.
That's what it was, okay.
And a lot of the calls are for things like transcripts and working papers that I get.
Okay, thank you, my final question is about. Sanitation. What I've noticed over the years is that some schools have. Devices where children can clean their hands and some schools do not. Is it possible that we can put a uniform practice in place that every? School will have at least two or three of these devices on every floor? So that children can just clean their hands, I've seen it in some schools and I've not seen it in other schools. That if we beef that up, we'll, you know, we can make sure that children are safer. So I'm not sure Darren said earlier that he would, he was going to provide additional information, so I'm assuming that in that additional information is the. Is the uniform practices.
I think Jim alluded to that earlier, Ms. Cotton.
I heard him say that there were sanitizations, but he did not say across the district. That we were going to make sure that they exist throughout the entire district. I know how it works, some schools do it, some schools don't, so I just wanted to make sure we're all doing it.
Yeah, we're trying to make it all equitable in that regard. With the warm water as well, because if you just use sanitizers all day long. That is a challenge, especially for young children, I'd rather have young children wash their hands with warm water. Five times a day than than do sanitizer, then you get. That's a problem, so so Jim, make sure you make it that is equitable to when we, you said you had to change out. All of these hand sanitizers for alcohol and so forth, every school, every work site across the district. You know, make sure they have adequate, adequate stations for that.
And we will, Dr. Cash, they were difficult to come by, but we're very close to being complete with that project. The the original hand sanitizers that were in schools. Were non-alcohol based and when we switched to an alcohol base, it required us to change all of those dispensers. I think what Mrs. Cotton is talking about might be a little different than that. But I'll, I'll check in with Darren and see specifically what that might be, we've really tried to focus on making sure. That all of our hot water was repaired and in great functioning order. And we think we're in really good shape with hand sanitizer, but the hand washing is the is the really, really the key to it. Sanitizing is eligible for when washing isn't available, so. You know, we want to, and we'll, we'll work with Barry to make sure.
I don't like the alcohol based sanitizer for children, you're going to have to, we're going to have to get some things straightened out about that. Make clear training to staff about that, okay, so they should take kids to the bathroom. Before they, before they use the hand sanitizer.
Yep.
I'm sorry, one other thing, on this report that you gave, sent us. Operations, it was sent out, I would guess it was sent to the all the board members, high level questions and responses. Items on page three talks about if children, if a student refuses to wear a mask. For level three and it would be a short. School suspension, my, since we have the option to send children home. I would ask that you take a look at. And just ban the child from being in in the school rather than suspending them, do you understand what I'm saying? Because this could possibly parachute on us as far as suspensions.
I thought we had agreed that they would have to go and be remote, they'd have to go to remote.
That's, that's right.
I don't want to put anything on their record for that, but I thought we had agreed that they would, they don't have a choice, you can't stay at school. But you can go home and we'll continue to serve you remotely, is that right, Tanja?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So that needs to be corrected then in here, thank you.
We will correct that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, President Cotton, next up we have Board Member McCosey, followed by Dr. Kathy Evans Brown. Board Member McCosey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Petrucci, but I did see Ann Rivera's hand up before mine, it's way down on the list, I'm not sure if you saw that.
I did, Jen, I said I was going to go in the order that people called in to make sure that we. She's up after Dr. Kathy Evans Brown.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought she was up before.
It's okay.
So I did write down some questions and I have quite a few of them, if they can all be answered now, I, it's fine. As long as, you know, I put them out there so people can see. I'm inquiring, some of them have been addressed to an extent, but not really answered. First question is about the liaisons, I'm wondering. The turnaround, what is the turnaround while these cases that the liaisons have been identifying? Whether or not, you know, we've been able to deal with them positively, whether or not we were able, you know, if we're still having issues with them, do we have any data around? Who and who the liaisons have been talking to, like what's the percentage across the district of positivity? And we've been able to, the liaisons identified issues with people and were able to work to rectify them. Any, you know, do we have the data to show how many cases we weren't able to, you know, really deal with or we're still struggling to deal with? I believe, you know, in my opinion, the liaisons being such a connection to the community, I love to know. You know, where we're at when they're called upon. So that's one question and I don't know if you want to.
Let me try to answer, thank you, Jennifer, for that, Darren, do you understand that question, I don't know what liaison means, so can you help with this?
Ms. McCosey is referring to the family liaisons we have in the school building. So if there was an issue that came up, the family liaisons were working with families to try to resolve their issues. Or they brought the issues to the building principals for resolutions, so I believe that's what she's referring to.
Exactly, thank you.
Is that a say yes position or is that a school based position?
They're a school based position, so the school principals identified, it could be a teacher aide, it could be a teacher assistant. But they identified individuals in the school building that would act as family liaisons.
Okay, so now can you answer her question?
Well, I, I think the associates would be in a better place to answer because I'm not sure what data was kept, but I know. Issues that the family liaisons discussed with families or that were brought to the family liaisons, the building administrators solved and resolved. If there was something that building administration was not able to resolve, they then brought those concerns to the associate superintendent. Of school leadership for those buildings where those issues were resolved, but I'm not sure if there was any data specifically kept on that. As the number of issues that were brought to the principal or the associates or the amount of time it took to resolve. Because every issue I'm sure was different and had certain specifics around it.
Okay, I mean, yeah, that's, that's what I was asking, like, I know it'd be hard to kind of capture all of that, but at the same time. I think that, you know, it doesn't have to be answered now, but what resonated the most out of issues that came about, you know, I mean. Often maybe.
Right.
And those type of, those type of things, I'm really curious to know what's going on in our communities and how they, you know, how they're relevant across the board, you know, how does it differ? Does it wet in the east and all of us look the same, you know, what, who's doing better, I guess? My second question is. The senior group, that single senior group that'll be meeting once a week, I'm wondering, because I wasn't sure how, and maybe I missed it. Was that a chosen group for seniors to come to, I've heard there's guidance help, there's folks that'll be, you know, they will be helped in a certain way, they'll meet once a week. Is that a chosen group or is that like a fluctuating, you can come to this group once a week if you have issues? And if it is a chosen group, how are the students chosen to be a part of that once a week?
Thank you for that question, Board Member McCosey, Toya, are you there? I think you can handle that question.
Yes, I can answer that question, so that is a chosen group, so the, you can't decide when to show up. It's important that we pay very close attention to. All of the COVID requirements, which require us to make sure we plan for space and and we have it planned out in advance. The school principals are using data to drive that. And so you've heard, I can't remember who said it earlier, but you've heard that some of our seniors are doing great. And they just made that extra help around college application process, they come in for a full day, they would get their courses for that day. But they also get supports around the college and career focus is one example that Ann Bocelli shared, but then there are other things, social emotional support and so on. So the neediest group of students, the principals did already select and many of them did select a number of seniors. So the seniors who really needed the most work for many schools have already been put into that group of five day a week. But then the next touch point would be seniors coming in two days a week and then the one day a week rotation, but again, that would be identified and communicated to families. Does that answer your question?
Is that helpful?
Yes, I just was wondering how the students were chosen to be a part of that group, but I think, I think it was touched upon and I missed it. Okay, I did write them all down.
Jen, they said that the principals were using data to determine who goes into what groups.
Right, so that one group is basically just, you know, if you need some college, some help with your applications, whatnot, I did, I did know that the neediest students would be chosen for the five day. Okay, also, so number three, is there an avenue? Okay, so this is for Mr. Wymer, in your presentation, you had said that the students who don't have face masks or, or, you know, weren't able to access them. Were to contact the school principal, I feel like there has to be, there has to be a connection there somewhere, maybe it's. The students connect to a teacher that connects to a principal, I feel like that might cause major confusion as a principal is. You know, if they're, if they're directed to do that with our communication issues, just around language barriers alone, that might be a little overwhelming. Is it, is there an avenue or kind of a connection route for, you know, for that to be identified? I understand we won't have, you know, all the supplies to be able to provide students every single time they don't have a mask, but. You know, to go directly for a parent or a guardian or caregiver to go directly to a principal, I feel like would be. You know, a little much, maybe, maybe I missed it and there's another step in there.
I think I hear your point. But we got to know somehow. Maybe, I don't, this liaison. That's president, I don't think that'll work Darren, what? What, what do you think is the best way to get this done, I mean, we have plenty of masks, plenty, millions.
Student go to the principal or not to the teacher and the teacher can communicate it to the principal instead of the student? Like that, that step is missing, like to go directly to a principal about masks.
Somebody have a relationship, huh?
No, I was saying, please keep in mind also that there'll be masks available on the school bus. So if a student is at a bus stop and does not have a mask, the minute they get on the bus, the bus driver will provide them a mask. So they will have one entering the school building, all right, so it'll be earlier in the day rather than just when they get to the school building.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that, you know, again, if I missed it, it's been a lot of information, so. Excuse me if I'm like repeating something.
Yeah, this is one of those that it's not like so rigid, you know, this is one of those that Jim, don't you think in A S Ls? You ask anybody.
It was, it was a specific point that caught me, like, we have to go to the principal, you know, I mean, like. I don't mean to nitpick, but I just, I want to.
And they'll help the kid, okay?
We have more masks than we'll ever need, it will not be an issue. And as Darren said earlier, they will be available through our bus drivers, so Cheryl Kennedy is providing all of our terminals. With masks for the drivers to provide students with if it's necessary, so.
Yeah, I just, I saw that point and it just kind of like stood out to me, so, yeah, I don't mean to be nitpicky, it just stood out.
No, no, I understand.
So number four, we talked about this a little bit when it comes to the testing and now I have an additional question. But the testing that we're going to start on the twenty fifth, right, then we have to hit this twenty percent. Staff and students, how do we determine beforehand when students are coming back? Who's going to get those that reach that twenty percent, is it a first come, first served, do we make appointments? Like, how do the, how do you determine who, who gets tested? In that, you know, the week before we start school, I know we're going to be ready and we're trying to do it ahead of time and I appreciate that, but how do we determine who is going to be tested?
That's a good question, Darren, if I understood it and Tanja. We're supposed to have a big board. And you do random, you create a random sample from, or what we call a stratified random sample. That deals with each grade has a little bit, each content has a little bit so that you get to your twenty percent. But it's, but it's sampled, it's not like, you know, you're the board member's child, so therefore you get to go first and that kind of thing. It's, we try to really put everybody up on the big board and look at the lists for that school. And we know where we got to be by the end of the month for twenty percent, I'd like to see it go to thirty percent. In other words, a little higher than twenty, because I think that's a low bar. You know, Darren and I will, will continue to fuss a little bit about it, but we're, we're going to, we're going to try to random sample. So that everybody has an equal opportunity to, to get selected, I don't want to be anywhere. Perceived that we're, we're, we're doing, you know, that it becomes an equity issue, I don't want that. And so that's, I think, Tanja, could you say more about your process? Tanja?
Sure, what you said is absolutely correct, we're sending out this week consents to test. So for all of those families who have indicated that they are interested in their children coming back, we're sending out communication. Asking parents to consent to testing and letting them know that we'll be following up the week of the twenty fifth if their child's name is chosen to be tested. And they can either have that test done at the school or they will be able to have their own private pediatricians do the test.
That's, that's very helpful, that last piece, because that's kind of where I was going with it, like, how do you, how are we determining where, where and how it's, it's happening? So doing that consent, you know, getting the consent ahead of time obviously is a pathway to figuring that out. So. For Ms. Warren, you had mentioned that you're having and scheduling ten minute conversations around any issues that people might be having around coming back or. Concerns that they have, I feel like that might not be enough time to really address an issue, let alone follow up and answer. You know, or address a concern, so I'm looking to, and this could be something we can follow up with, it doesn't have to be now, but I'm just concerned about that timeframe. And what is the timeframe of follow up in case you can't give a direct answer? Obviously, with people returning back to the building so soon, we want to be able to ease people in back, back, but also give them, you know, the real about how. This is going to happen and, and, you know, there are rules to follow and I see, you know, how you're going about this in a way that's. That's how we, we have to do it, but. But, um, I feel like the less tension involved, the better. So that 10-minute conversation, I don't know, you know, when you said you scheduled those, it really kind of tweaked me. I was like, I, I can't even get a question out in 10 minutes, let alone be able to deal with a concern, so.
So first I have to say, the first comfort that they receive is from their building principal. They're going back home and they want to know they're gonna be safe at home. I'm just sharing what an accommodation means. It means we help you come back to work. It doesn't mean we help you stay home. So I'm, I'm really the information part of it. And we're not coming up with all kinds of different, um, services. We have a list of available PPE to assure them that we're ready, but we're not ordering hazmat suits. We're really talking about all of our employees are safe, we're creating the best safe environment. And really what we find when we look at the data, it's the behavior of the adults. So you're not getting it necessarily at work because we're doing all the things to keep you safe. It's your outside behavior that will may, that may actually bring it to work. So we're asking everybody to follow these protocols that we've put in place. We have staff that has, have never stopped reporting, our food service has never stopped reporting, our transportation, our service center, our security, and we've kept them safe and worked with them and now we're welcoming everybody back. So what I'm finding during the conversations is my colleagues are not wearing their masks. I say we're gonna enforce mask wearing. I really want to come in at a separate entrance. Okay, you can come into the emphasis closer to your classroom. Most people are ready to come back, but they need to vent about it, they need to ask questions, they need to know. So it, it doesn't really require longer than 10 minutes because their biggest comfort comes directly from their building principals. And their building principals are welcoming them back and telling them that things are gonna be fine, we have things in place for you. So, um, 10 minutes does seem to be long enough and it, and if they, they have additional time, they want to sign up, they can sign up again. It's just that we have over a thousand people that we're working with and we gotta be able to know who's coming back by January 25th. So I have to move through this process, but what I'm finding is most people are fine. And their principals are the ones who really make them feel much more comfortable coming back to work.
Okay, I, and, and it, that, that puts into perspective a little more. I will say that the way that it was, that I heard it from you earlier, was that if they weren't, you know, comfortable or they weren't, they, they had an issue with how things are going and, and maybe they're not comfortable with the way the principal put it, you know, put about, then they come to you. That you, that's the way I thought is that if they're coming to you because they're not comfortable with how it's presented. So when you put it like that, interpreted what you were saying. So I just wanted to be clear because I assume that, um, you know, there is an issue past, you know, their communication with their principal and now they're coming to HR because they have issues. And I didn't feel that if you're bringing it to a higher deal, 10 minutes was out.
Jen, I, I do think it's a both and, I think it's a both and. I think the, the process is fluid. So until the employee is comfortable, it may be back, it may be back and forth. Jamie, they gotta have, they gotta have a, um, uh, a recourse to keep, you know, to keep coming back to you. And if you then intervene with this, with the, with the, uh, building to help, then that's part of your work as well. So, yeah.
Say she would reschedule more.
We're not moving anybody off, we're gonna keep working with the employee until they are comfortable.
Yeah, I don't leave anybody unsatisfied, but we do have times that they can continuously sign up. But my goal is treat them with dignity, support them and their understanding. And so, yeah, we don't leave anyone on the phone angry or unsatisfied. Our goal is to support.
It's a both and.
Thank you, and, and this is my last question, I swear I'm done. Um, when you talk about the 800 subs that are gonna be trained across the board, right? Um, we were saying that we're training them based on principal input and the whole nine. Right, I found this, you know, and maybe again, I misinterpreted how this was, but if you train in a blanket measure, when at the same time we're constantly looking at our schools as individual schools because of their climate, because of, you know, they're dealing with. And, um, so I'm wondering, do we have subs that are kind of dedicated to schools? Are they blanket subs? You know, are, how, how, how do we make sure that we're not causing further confusion? Or, you know, i- if a teacher is out due to COVID, that's a 14-day stint from, so, you know. He was taking over.
I think that's a good question.
I rely on the principals saying what they need for the subs to be ready. So they want them to be familiar with our platforms. They want them to be familiar with how to access the lesson plans, um, how to access materials. So making sure they know our platforms, can access our platforms, can follow a lesson plan. Making sure they have the, the rudiments of best instruction in a remote environment. So that's the beginning of the training for readiness. But I also shared that we've opened up a library now of online training. So on their own, they can take advantage of a whole library of training related to CLRI, related to trauma-informed care, related to all the district-wide initiatives. So in this remote environment, instead of trying to pull everybody out and try to train everybody at the same time, like we're doing for this mass training, they'll be on their own path. And it, the path has three levels. So after they finish a series of training, they'll get a badge saying, wow, you were successfully completed on level one, keep going. Then they'll get another badge for level two and level three. So they're going to now be a continuous part of self-directed training.
I, I think, uh, and that's, that's great. I think that that's wonderful too. But I would love to be able to know whether or not they have the opportunity as subs, if they know where they're gonna go. Can they get a 10-minute kind of overview before their training or before they go into a classroom of what they're walking into? Right, having the basic for just school in general, I get that. And that, that's part of what they should be learning regardless because they're substitute teachers. But I really feel like as far as the equity issue is and the way that the board is, is really pushing to make sure this is real, that our substitute teachers really get a sense of what they're walking into or what they're viewing on Zoom or however they want to do it. Because each school is different and each school has a different climate. And if we have the opportunity to make sure that there is more than just the additional PD trainings that anybody can take, like what's specific to school three?
Well, it's really important. Really important for us, of course, the district is standardize the expectation for teachers. Dr. Kanchan's expended and Anne Barchelli's expended a lot of resources and we're not a, a one initiative and then throw it away. We have the initiatives over a deep look. So we've been doing CLRI for years, we've been doing trauma-informed care for years. Our teachers, the curriculum has been for years. Because that's the way that you make sure the kids have access to the same rigorous curriculum across the system. So what we're doing for our subs, what I'm sharing with you now, they're having access to the most training they've ever had.
I understand that, I'm not disputing that, not one bit. I'm asking for additional, what would be an additional measure? If any, if we can manage that for a sub to be able, since they're going from building to building, can they have, um, an allotted 15 minutes or whatever, some sort of overview of what they're walking into in a particular classroom or in a particular school? If they're coming from, say, you know, a, a, a school in North Buffalo and they're going into a school with primary, primarily English language learners, that's a jump. And, and what is, what can they be given instead of just going into that classroom? What we've already known to be a roadblock, you know what I mean? So what can we do? And I'm not saying it's gotta be answered now, I'm just saying that's something that's in my mind.
Thank you.
So I, I understand and appreciate all the resources and PD that we have. I'm, we're signing off on it all the time. So I do know what we have and I think it's pretty, you know, I think it's pretty intense and I'm very proud of what we're doing. But at the same time, with this happening on top of COVID, on top of the trauma-informed care, we're gonna have to do, I really feel like making sure our substitute teachers can, you know, at least hit the ground running best they can. And a lot of it is climate-based.
Listen.
Yeah.
Uh, this question is, is important, I don't want to lose it. What Jennifer is talking about is that of all of the employee groups, if we don't do some, some layered training and, and especially some idiosyncratic training to a particular building and culture and class content, right? Or grade level for a sub, that could be one of the very most challenging jobs on earth in a situation like this, you see what I mean? Substitute teaching in this environment, if they don't get the proper support, is, is almost impossible to be, to be helpful or to be effective. And they're gonna be called on a lot. Substitutes are gonna be called on a lot during this, uh, during this next period. So I think all I heard Jennifer saying is all the top level stuff, all the, all the, no matter where, what, how stuff is good. But then what about on the day that you called me and I've gotta go to, I don't know, Hamlin Park 74, uh, Mrs. Johnson's class? And she has, um, you know, a 1211 or an 811, I don't know the kids. Is anybody gonna be, could I come early, 15 minutes and get a briefing on what I'm getting ready to step into? I just think that, that's just good management and good planning. We've got to do that for our subs, wherever they go. You could go to high school the very next day in a physics class. And if you just expected to come in cold to that class down in South Park after the day before, you know, that's quite a, that's quite a difference. So I do think somewhere, somehow, we ought to have somebody in charge of, uh, orientation to the school. And, you know, the teacher could provide, the teacher could provide, uh, a one-pager for that, for the sub, for that day. I, I think it's somewhere between that is what, what, what she's talking about.
And, and in our, our system, it's called AESOP. And in the subsystem, the teacher does put lesson plans. But I really like the idea, Ms. McCosey, it's very innovative and it kind of personalizes the school experience. So I'm really gonna think about it and I'll, I'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Let the ASLs know, because that, that's gonna unfold at the, uh, at the building level. Okay? Okay. Thank you.
I'm done, Mr. Petrucci, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCosey. Yes, Mr. Hurd, do you have a question or want to make a point about one of Ms. McCosey's questions?
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you, I'm low. Um, yeah, I want to piggyback off of Jennifer McCosey, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, Dr. Cash, you probably can answer them. Uh, we, we talked about, um, you're, you're speaking about, um, testing. Now, the 20% that's rec, that's mandated by the state, i- is that gonna be our mandate also within our district? Or would it be more ramped up at times?
Well, it's gonna be our starting point because of a limited number of tests. Uh, if we in fact, you know, start seeing that we need a greater number, because it may be several months before we get back to you. Say, my name is Terrence Hurd, I get tested on February 4th. I may not get back to you the rest of the year. I may not get back to you to May 16th. And by then, you've been infected 16 times. I don't know. It's just, it's just not enough. That's why it's not enough to me. Because you don't get back to that person again for too long. But we certainly can't do it at my level of expectation, which would be twice a week for everybody. See, twice a week for everybody. We don't have that, that, that capacity or we don't have, and we don't have that number of tests. But that's why I said 20% is too low. I'd like to try it, start there as a baseline, let's see what, what, what that means. But you're gonna start to see that it is gonna be quite a while before you would get back to anybody. So what do you really know about the, uh, cases and, you know, the situation at your, at your school? You don't really have a good picture of.
Okay, my, my, my question is, say if a child come to, to school with a headache or they have allergies. I, I know I have bad allergies, you know, I'm, I sniff all the time. Um, if, if they, they're sniffing in class, if their eyes are red, or maybe if they have a flu symptom, would they automatically be tested, that, that child?
I don't know, I don't think so, I don't think so. I think their temperature would be taken. And they'll be, we'll, we'll be trying to assess whether they're sick or not or, or whether they do have. We should have files, medical files, health files, history files on every kid. So we'll know if a kid has asthma, a kid has bronchitis, sinuses, you know, that kind of thing. And the parents can help us with that. We don't want to be over panicking about it, but at the same time, we want to make sure that a kid goes home, uh, if they're feeling sick and that we're taking temperatures, you know, all the time and making sure that we're not seeing a symptomatic situation. Tanja, what would you add? How would you add to that?
You've answered it, um, absolutely correct. And for the test that we're giving, when children are showing symptoms, um, there's a higher rate of a possible false positive, um, if we give the test. So if a child is, they will be sent to the nurse, the nurse will do an assessment and make a proper recommendation, which is likely to have the child go home and ask the parent to follow up with their medical physician.
And the nurse will have the records of that child as well. Keep in mind, these rapid tests versus those other more intrusive invasive tests, there's more false positives with them. There's more false positives and, and I do worry a bit about that.
Oh, will that child be sent home on, on a, on a metro bus or on a school bus with other kids? Um, if he's showing those type of symptoms, but we're not sure?
We're asking, we're asking the parent or caregiver to come get them. Uh, we'll have security be in a place, if we can't immediately get hold of the parent, sometimes we can't immediately get hold, uh, and then we'll make sure that that child, uh, gets home. We gotta get them home. We, we even position to call 911 if we have to.
Thank you, I think, uh, Madam President has a question.
911, how can you expect poor people to pay a thousand dollars of a trip in a, in an ambulance? You call 911, they're gonna call, they're gonna call the, um, uh, the, uh, the, uh, ambulance. This is gonna have to, because 911 is not coming.
Well, we can't have, we can't have, we can't have parent, the kids never being picked up. We gotta have a, a recourse and a process. That's the process as it is right now.
So, uh, when they, when you get these sign-in sheets, are you gonna have, uh, one, two and three people who that can be contacted in the event of an emergency?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'm sorry.
Is 911.
Okay, all right. Tell them this, is that sent here?
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for, thank you very much for your questions and your responses. Next, we have, uh, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, followed by Dr. Anne Rivera. Kathy, the floor is yours.
Hello, most of my questions were, uh, answered actually. Um, thank you, Dr. Cash and Cabinet for, um, a robust presentation. I learned a lot, um, but we have to start somewhere, especially being out of these buildings for 10 months. And I think overall, across this country, everyone is experiencing similar challenges. It's very daunting, you know, etc. But one thing that struck in my mind is that we talk about testing children. I would be more concerned about the adults. So, um, can staff and or adults test in the school as well? That would be my question.
Good question.
Yes, they're part of that 20%, Darren, if I understand. Darren, can you answer that question, please?
Absolutely. So the requirements from the New York State Department of Health and the Air Corps of Defense is that that 20% includes students, staff and teachers.
And that's again, that's again why you see it's such a low bar. Because if it includes all of those populations, you're not, you get tested one time, you're never gonna get tested again for a long time. And, and that concerns me. But anyway, that's the, that's where we'll start so that we can, uh, pressure test it and see how it works.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown.
God bless you, Dr. Evans-Brown.
Uh, you got your first blessing of the evening. Uh, Dr. Anne Rivera, followed by Board Member Hope J.
Hey, colleagues, I only, I only say that, and we can be here all night, it's okay, because this is important. But it is 8 o'clock and Jeff has a, a finance report to give that'll be probably an hour, given your questions as well. I'm just letting you know what time it is. Uh, Darren sent me a text and told me to remind you.
I didn't.
You were under the bus there.
Board members know with our history, we've been here since 11, midnight sometimes, so no, we're good, we're good.
Now, Sharon, I may be letting you know it a little bit, that I'm getting ready to leave, so remember we talked about that.
I bet you're hungry, I bet you're hungry.
That's right, I look, look.
I know you're hungry, it's a long day for you. Just stand, Dr. Cash.
Right. Go ahead, um, Kathy. Go ahead.
It's Dr. Rivera.
Kathy, don't. Ann, how are you, Ann?
I'm good. How are you? Hi.
Good to see you.
You too. I, you're in luck. You have two questions. So, in advance, for all of the detailed answers, I appreciate everything. And a lot of my questions were answered as well as the documents you sent us. My two questions, my first one is about behavior. So we, the process for behavior. The, the process for mask non-compliance was outlined in the document you sent us, but I have a particular question regarding early, early childhood. And students with special needs in terms, people, in other words, are students who may not understand why mask compliance is important or health and safety is important. How will those, how will those behaviors be managed? Because we don't want to elevate it unnecessarily, but we want to ensure that the community is safe.
That's right. And colleagues, Ann, and if, um, if Kim Holzer is on the line, what, what I know, what I would do and what we need to do is just like we talk about the rules in the first day of class for any school, anytime, anywhere, you, we're, there's going to have to be a period that we train on with our youngsters. We can't assume they'll come, uh, wearing masks, perfectly ready to keep masks on, know how to do all of that and so forth. I do think a lot of children have been, uh, acculturated, uh, about mask wearing because their families do that with them. But yeah, we're going to take some time with our staff to train all of our youngsters. These are young, these are young students. And there are high need students, you know, and there are a lot of issues, there's a lot of issues there. So if you, if any staff can, uh, amplify, uh, for, for, for Ms., for Dr. Rivera, that would be great.
This is Kim Holzer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Hi, Dr. Cash. Hi, board members.
Hi.
We, we actually have some protocols that we'll be rolling out soon, especially surrounding students with disabilities. We do realize that there will be some students who it will be a challenge for them to wear the mask. So we sort of have a true folk plan. Um, if a student cannot tolerate a mask for medical or sensory reasons, they can wear a face shield while we are, um, getting them more acclimated to the mask. We've also been reaching out to other organizations such as Summit, um, Autistic Services. And they've been, given us some great feedback that we are going to roll out to our staff as well. So that really does go around training, acclimating students. Um, really spending the first couple of weeks or so when they come back to school, not worrying so much about their, um, academics, but worrying about ac- acclimating them to some of these behaviors that they're going to have to attend to, like wearing a mask. Because we do realize that that's going to be the most important thing at first, helping them with social distancing. Um, we got some suggestions from Autistic Services that for some of our students with disabilities, making sure that you have a work area where everything that they are comfortable with is in their work area so that they don't feel the need to leave their seat and things like that. So we're, we're rolling out protocols so that we can address some of those more challenging behaviors to keep everyone safe.
And if I could add?
Yeah, add to it, Tanja, and I want to add something.
Okay, because longer for students with disabilities, it's going to be that we're going to be doing that work for everyone. And one of the things that Dr. Morrell's work really is entrenched in is, um, stories and lived experiences. And so we want our teachers to share stories and lived experiences about why wearing masks are so important. We, we know that children, um, you know, they really enjoy hearing story, the stories and they relate when they understand, you know, to why is it important? It, this is, this is a serious situation. It could be life threatening. And so, you know, we're doing a lot of work with restorative practice. So we don't want to jump to a level three, um, if a child is not. We want to find out what's going on. Why aren't they wearing it? And we want to work with them, you know, supportively and restoratively.
Yeah, that's a great point, Dr. Williams. And I just want you to know, colleague, that from my standpoint, we're going to have to all help. And ASLs, I want you to hear me. It has to be about kindness. It has to be about nurturing and, uh, helping students understand the new rules because they haven't been in, in the situation. Some of them never, and then many of them not for 10 months. And, you know, they'll learn, they'll learn well, but you can't do it based on like discipline. You, you have to be there on the side of compassion, of, of, of understanding, of repetitiveness, you know? You got to repeat it continuously, but in a nice calm tone. And teachers, and good teachers do this anyway, but I just can't have, because they have their own anxieties. You know, maybe they up it in terms of escalating some things. And so we'll be, we'll be very vigilant of that, Dr. Rivera, and we'll be monitoring that very closely is my point.
Good. Thank you. It is an anxious time and I think all of us need extra reassurance and more uncompacted, a little grace. My second question is a two-part question. I'm gratified to hear that every effort is being made to keep students with their current teachers, whether they're virtual or in person. And the schedule that was laid out is very interesting and I think, um, very thoughtful about what is needed. It is however complicated in terms of classroom management and in terms of the time of teachers. So I was wondering if you could speak a little more about the kind of in-person support that teachers might be getting because it's complex classroom management. It's worthwhile classroom management, but it is complex. And I'm wondering if there will be, are there some plans or some processes in place to support teachers as they get used to managing two separate groups? And I'm equally interested in what kind of supports will be in place for virtual students since teachers' time is going to be increased with working with the two different groups in classrooms.
Correct. Let me start in and then you go, okay?
Sure.
Colleagues, what I've emphasized during staff meetings is while it is complex and while it is different, it's certainly no more, what this is, Ann, is a grouping problem. It's a grouping problem. In other words, how will you group students for instruction? And, and good teachers have been doing that since I went to school in the one, in the one house, the one house schoolhouse for pre-K to 12, grade 12, one teacher, and we were all in different grades. I don't think it was me, but it was somewhere between my, maybe my mother's age, okay? But the point is that is fundamentally a grouping challenge. So good teachers do this all the time. When they're in their regular in-person class and they have kids of differing, uh, learning, content ability, see? They, they group them accordingly until the kids can either catch up or until we can, uh, get them where they need to be. So grouping has occurred forever in schooling. And if, and if you really look at this at its core, this is a grouping issue. And we have the technology and most teachers will catch on readily with it when they start to look at it that way. And if they start to have some good examples, exemplage, right?
Good.
Because you can put kids in what we call breakout rooms. You can do that with technology. You can put them in office hours. You can put them in asynchronous. I'll be right with you. You, you're going to have the aides and the assistants helping out. Uh, we, we're going to be able to do this. This can be done. So I don't want to over enable. I want to, I want to support and encourage, but I don't want to over enable and say, Jesus, this is going to be impossible. This is so hard. I can't do this. You know, that kind of thing. So that's how we're going to approach it. Now, Ann, you go ahead and.
I was really interested. Because professionals, they can do this, but they need to be able to be supported to bring their heads down that grouping problem because it's new. And it's hard to do it with, with, when you're just kind of.
Grouping is not a new problem. It's age old.
It's the additional tech in this situation is all I'm saying.
All right. So Ann, do you want to amplify it all?
Sure. So I concur with both of you. Um, grouping is something teachers have been doing for years. And I probably showed you the most complex example of all of them. It was a 90-minute block. Um, but I would say that our reading teachers, uh, or elementary teachers who teach reading are very skilled at that practice. They know how to analyze data and put kids together into appropriate groups, flexible grouping. Um, so now it's a question of whether you're pulling kids from two different environments or not. But we've also purchased, um, a lot of tools at their disposal to use for asynchronous time that make it significantly easier to, for them. So as an example, um, Lexia, it placement tests kids automatically. So if I need to work with this group in front of me in the, um, in-person setting, I can safely assign Lexia to my async students at home and knowing that it's going to meet their needs. With math, if I just taught, um, grade two, module one, lesson four, there is a comparable Zern lesson that I can assign to the asynchronous group to reinforce what I just taught. So we've provided a lot of tools that will make their lives significantly easier in terms of that planning. Um, and so then when they pull the flexible groups, I do recommend in many cases that they try to use the breakout rooms. Um, because they can pre-assign students so they don't have to worry about, you know, who am I going to put together? Because they can think about it the day before and pre-assign the groups. Um, and they have, again, so many tools at their disposal. Um, and it's nice if you pair the student who's in front of you live with the student who's virtually on the screen. Because then you have eyes on the student as well, because you can see one of the partners in the breakout room right in front of you. So you can keep them on task. So I think once people experiment with it, they'll come to their level of comfort and make decisions about how they group students within the class. We're just providing some suggestions as a sample. Um, so we have some math samples, some reading samples. They can pick and choose which elements they think will work best for their room. Um, and we do have ITCs who can provide support as well as coaches in every elementary building and, and many of the secondary buildings. And we'll work with them. Um, the directors and, and CIA and supervisors will also support, um, the implementation.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate that because one of the things that I have heard from students and from parents and caregivers is that the flexibility of the asynchronous format works for a lot of students because it reinforces those skills. Because it allows them to relook at things, but also they're able to take advantage of teacher office hours. And I wanted to hear ways that that might be preserved. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rivera. Uh, Board Member Jake tells me that her questions have been answered. Thank you very much, Hope. Uh, which brings us to Board Member Paulette Woods. Uh, Ms. Woods, do you have any questions?
Um, just a couple. I just wanted to say that, uh, this has been very informative. I do appreciate all the hard work that, that the Principe Bowes and the APs and everyone has put into these plans. It, it's excellent work. My one question, first question is, the work you're doing, um, how are you conveying it to the community? Um, questions were raised about the safety of the buildings. Teachers are raising that. Uh, some way we can put a press piece and challenger, criterion, and, and say something to the effect of how we're doing all this, uh, extra cleaning of the buildings, that we've changed some filters, uh, that they're, they're doing, uh, cleaning twice a day or something. This is something to really know about all this hard work you're doing. So do the teachers and the union and all these folk safe? That's, that's communicating that is important.
I think that's a fair question. Um, we've been working hard to try to get it into a form that is, uh, reasonably concise, reasonably clear. And so that's the effort that you see in that, uh, Q and A high level that we sent earlier. And that Larry alluded to and said was helpful and so forth. And I trust all of you feel it's helpful. Now, there, there are many, many other questions that people have, but I'm not sure. I think we're going to have to communicate it in a number of different ways and just keep communicating it. And then the bottom line is going to be what you perceive to be the case when you come in, right? I'm going to be visiting some schools the week right before to do my own little white glove test and, and smell and sniff, uh, and, and walk through with some folks, um, properly distanced and all of that. Um, and I'll give an assessment. But the, but the real test comes in is when we, when we get in back, when we get back in, you know? And we're going to, and we're going to do our very best. We're going to do our very best. Because the protocols themselves that are in Appendix D of these school-based plans, they're like four or five pages, single spaced of all the things that we have to do to meet CDC guidelines. That's why we've tried to distill it, um, Board Member Woods, and put it at a high level. Now, if you say we should try to communicate that, that we can do that, but it, it, it often triggers, you know, all of these questions from folk because they know that there really are a whole lot of things, you know, that, that, that should happen according to CDC guidelines.
Um, well, I would still say even that, even a succinct, a more succinct version out in where everyone can read it without, and if they want to go on the website to follow up with more detailed questions, I think that would be very good because I really want us to be very transparent on that. I also made a pledge that I would walk through my schools before the students go in there. So I'd like to accompany you on some of your, um, I'd like to talk.
You just got back from all over the world. I'm, you're not going with me anywhere.
Oh, I took five COVID tests just to be able to travel.
Yeah, you broke, broke those tests too.
They won't let you get five without COVID tests.
Look, look, Ms. Woods, to your point, here's a checklist. Can you see that? It's about two pages long. It's very nice, very clear. And it then has links to the longer pieces. Something like that we could put up online. We can, uh, send it to the newspapers. Uh, we can try to make this available as wide and far as we can. That was the purpose I had Ms. Calla put it together. So it's put together. It matches what we talked about tonight with additional information. It's not too long for each item. See, you got a paragraph for return to in-person classes. And we describe exactly what that means. We got a paragraph for transportation. Paragraph for, uh, testing and vaccines. Paragraph for, you know, hand washing, sanitizing and all, all the things you're talking about is right here in this three-page document. And, uh, we can, the only thing it doesn't have right now is the links to those longer pieces. But we can do that and then we'll get it out. Would that be?
It would be great. That would be great for transparency. In the community papers though, especially the criterion and the challenger, I'm talking about communicating to the community.
Got you. So Eleanor, we'll take care of that first thing in the morning, okay?
Uh, I do want to visit my schools because I said I would walk in first and I mean to keep that pledge.
Okay, you let me know how they are and then when you've gone, I'll, I'll come in after you.
Oh, okay. Uh, the only other.
I'm halfway teasing and I'm halfway not. We'll see what we can work out, okay?
COVID test. Other question that I had was about the students who cannot wear masks. The, um, the, the, uh.
What's the question?
Do we, the, the, do we have the face shield?
Yeah.
But this, for, for those students who, the mask is uncomfortable and they can't keep it on. What I've been reading is the face shield is, is required for some of the disabled students, some of the, uh, students with challenges.
Yes, we have plenty of those. But again, it's a case by case basis because we have to make sure, you know, that, that, that things aren't going on with some, like in some of our kids in some schools, that, that wouldn't even be adequate. So because of the medical issues, but, uh, we'll, we'll, we certainly do have those kinds of masks. They're not a fail-safe for everything, but we do have them for some.
And my, and my last question is, I know, and I'm glad that we're finally bringing the, the, the students back to school. That's excellent. That's wonderful. But there's still a significant number of students who are not going to be in that hundred that we cannot bring back into the schools in high school. in high school that need support by learning. I know we have the programs at Say Yes's funding for preschool to eight. What can we do to give more support for online learning for the high school students who are having challenges? Because what I don't want to happen is the ninth graders and the 10th graders who have a year behind or they're behind. I don't want them to fall so far behind or get discouraged. I want them to have some help to keep them in school and so they stay on course, get on course and graduate.
Absolutely.
What do you have as a support program like the one that Say Yes has for the lower grades that will help the high school students? That's my last question.
Tanja, Darren, Toya, you know, we're doing a lot, a lot for all of our students to make sure they stay on track to graduation. Who would like to give a response to board member Woods?
Dr. Cash, this is Will. Maybe what's a good answer is what we're doing with UB with the virtual tutoring with our high school students. We've had anywhere from 150 to 180 high school students with a one-on-one virtual tutor from UB. These are vetted tutors. They're hired by the Graduate School of Education and they've been working with our students. They are going to, as soon as their semester starts in about a week or two, they are going to reboot and stay with us all the way through June. And we will continue to promote that opportunity to our parents. So that opportunity is available right now and it'll continue until further notice.
Again, online. I said, that's online again. The parents are asking for community sites that the seniors can also come to and get interpersonal reaction help. Parents were asking specifically for, we gave it to the preschool to the eighth grade. Is there any way we can give that kind of support? The high school students who are going to remain online.
So we also have, I'm sorry, it's Toya Wilson. We also have available to our students a virtual extended day. That, again, that's virtual, it is online. But it is another opportunity to support students through their coursework. We've also expanded and provided more flexibility around our online platform for any coursework around credit recovery. And so those are some of the things we have in place. As far as the seniors, that's, the seniors' schedule has been designed to support just that. So at that touch point, you've made available to every single senior. They can come in and have that in-person connection with folks at school to really help them with that college and career readiness and how they network or how do they navigate that system and that transition.
And this answer is a little different, but in about a week and a half, we will have all of our 11th graders coming in for PSAT testing. This is just to, you know, assure you that we're not missing a beat. Even though they are on remote learning, all of our 11th grade students will have the opportunity to come in for PSAT testing. And, you know, what that test really does is it's helping them to prepare and to identify any gaps which they may have before they sit for the actual SAT test. It also qualifies them for the National Merit Scholarship. And so we've put together a protocol, we believe, so that students will be safe. But students will also have the opportunity to be competitive with their peers in other districts, you know, in private schools as they begin to apply to college. So we're trying not to miss a beat and making sure that, you know, the college and career ready piece is a priority.
As a National Merit Scholar, I appreciate those efforts.
Oh, wow. Congratulations on that. That's huge.
I could tell the first time I met you. Very quick question, Ms. Woods. Are you referring to students that are choosing not to return to high school?
Yes, because the current plan, our current plan is the principal selected good people for their schools. But the need is significantly greater than that. So you're aware that that would leave a hole there.
That's where there was a misunderstanding because it was the 100 students that the principal and the school-based management team selected as the most neediest. But then Dr. Cash added all seniors. And then it will be a phasing of the additional high school students.
But she, Ms. Woods is asking, while they're still on remote, ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, what supports are they receiving in addition to the remote learning? I guess that, I think that's what she's asking.
Oh, I thought she was talking. I'm sorry. Okay.
So, you know, either Toya or David might want to take a stab at it. There's a lot of things that the kids are still getting the supports to not fall off track. But as far as in-person, you know, we're not doing that. But they're still getting counseling, they're still getting all their subjects. And if you know of a family that is struggling and needs support, like I've always said, let us know. Let Tanja know and she'll reach out and we'll make a, we'll make a plan for those students or for that family. Let us know.
I appreciate that, Dr. Cash, because that's exactly where the problem came from. I referred them to Say Yes and found out the program was only from preschool to eight and I couldn't help the high school students. I didn't have an answer.
Okay, well, let us know and we'll get on it for those families.
Thank you.
I just want to chime in, Paulette, because you're correct. Unfortunately, it's limited in-person activities for that age group, ninth through 12. Now, the Buffalo Urban League does have a program of paid experiences. It's like a work experience for that group. It's through the in-school program under our youth department. So I can give you that information to disseminate, you know, to the community.
I'd appreciate that. Anything that would help close a little bit of a gap.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown, for that information. It was very important. I just want to thank everyone tonight. I have a few questions. I'll work in brevity regarding, first of all, I want to thank staff, both for preparing this but also for taking the time, not only to answer our questions as a board, because it's been very informative, I know, to all of us, but also to all those who are watching tonight. First question, I have four, is for Anne Botticelli. I know, Anne, many of the practices that we've put in place during the COVID crisis have been things that parents and students, principals, teachers and others have asked for a long time. You kind of piqued my curiosity when you said you're going to maintain some of these and bring them forward. I was wondering if you could just kind of give us a brief list of some of these, not an exhaustive list, but just kind of a highlighted list of some of these things that you hope to bring forward once we come out of this crisis.
Sure. Well, one thing that we will never give up is Schoology or the equivalent learning management system if we ever changed vendors. But that has allowed us the flexibility and the organization that we were lacking, even in brick and mortar. So we had had Schoology in practice, but it wasn't used consistently across the board. And now that teachers have seen it, I don't think they'll let it go. But it allows you to post assignments, to post readings, to post videos, website links. You can host teams through Schoology. You can grade assignments and provide feedback. You can host discussion boards so kids can comment. We just shared a strategy for doing a virtual gallery walk, which is something, if you can picture in a classroom, you might set up five or six stations and have kids rotating through them. Well, now we just shared a way that you can do it through Schoology virtually. So I think there's a lot of benefits to having that kind of management in place, even when you're in brick and mortar. So if I'm a student who's absent for a day, I can log into Schoology and see what I missed. Teachers can post a video of the class if they taped it and then students can watch it. If I've been suspended, I can watch from home. I mean, there's just so many opportunities. If I'm on medical at home, I can log in and see what's been going on during class time. So I don't think that's going anywhere, or at least, again, the equivalent of that. I think some of the programs that we had been using, people might not have realized how wonderful they are and how they can really lend themselves to engagement for students. So an example would be NearPod. We did have it previously, but I would say it was underused compared to what people are realizing now are the benefits. So just as an example, we were able to turn all of the math modules, grades three to six, into NearPod lessons. So teachers can then take the lesson and customize it for their own students. And it's interactive. It can do quizzes and polls and surveys. There's little activities you can embed. You can put videos in, you can link to other sources. So I don't see NearPod going anywhere in the near future. Those are just two examples. I think a lot of the technology we've seen is going to be very productive in any environment that we're in. Zern is another example. I know I keep talking about it, but I love it. I think it completely parallels the math module the teacher just taught, but it's in a highly engaging, briefer format. So you can use it to preview the lesson that's coming or you can use it to follow up and provide additional practice. There's an embedded exit ticket that provides data to the teacher so she can group her students the next day any way she wants, based on the data she pulls from their exit tickets online. It's got video tutorials for kids that are very engaging. They have great graphics, like animated graphics. And they're usually students talking to other students or a teacher from the program talking to the kids. But they're tight, they're engaging, and they reinforce any concept that we're working on. So I think there's a lot of things that we've embedded because of virtual or expanded because of virtual that we're going to keep when we go back.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. The next question is for Cheryl Kennedy because everyone wants a logistics question at 8:30 at night. I'm concerned, or I just have a quick question about transportation. So we're able to, so many of our children rely on bus service to get to school in our district, the vast majority, the overwhelming majority. So right now, we're not going to be changing bell times. We're keeping the same bell times, but we'll be able to get all of our kids there at that time using the existing buses that we have right now?
So I anticipate we're going to have to use our full fleet of buses for phase one. Right now, we're looking at about 400 buses that we're going to need to use. And what we're doing at each building site is we are staggering bus arrival times. For a school that has maybe 10 buses, we're going to put two buses in every five minutes. And we are going to maintain our regular established bell times. But that will allow the students to enter and exit the building in a staggered schedule so that we're not creating a group of students all brushing at the same time.
Okay. No, thank you. That's good to know. The next question I have is regarding, as we start edging back to normalcy, and I said edging, regarding the entrance exams for City Honors in Olmsted. I was wondering if there's been any discussion or has there been a decision made as to how they're going to be conducted?
Will and Tanja, let's start with Will.
Yeah, I think actually, Dr. Cash, I'll defer to Dr. Williams because I know she's been working with the principals on what's next with that.
Right, so we started our high school ahead process for some of the other Criterion schools. And there's a meeting tomorrow, in fact, with the principals from school number 64 and school 61. And there will be a meeting next week. We're phasing it and we, you know, have to be careful about testing prior to actually getting the kids back into school. But there are some meetings that are scheduled. We're looking at the application process and how we'll be able to receive applications electronically for those schools the same way that we are for the other Criterion high schools.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Just saying, it's the number one question that I've been receiving lately. Just parents are concerned they don't want to miss the opportunity. Last question is one about, question I received just because we've spoken a lot about school safety as we should, should be our main priority and the reopening on the limited basis, the first round, the first trench. The question I would have is, I was wondering, because we have two other main areas where we have large concentrations of employees. One is in City Hall, the other one's in the Service Center. And oftentimes, those two areas interact with our schools as well. I was wondering if someone could talk a little bit about the safety protocols or procedures or practices that we have in place at both City Hall and the Service Center? Because oftentimes, people may go from City Hall to a building or from the service building to one of our school buildings just to, just so we can demonstrate that there's this continuity of safety across the district.
Let's see. Will, could you start that one?
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you, Superintendent. It's a very important question, Mr. Petrucci, that you've asked. So City Hall and a place like the Service Center and then all of our central office sites that are located throughout the district are operating under one plan that is based on the original and then the ongoing CDC and Erie County Health Department guidance for office reopenings. And that will continue. So when you come into our offices at City Hall or at any of our central office sites, it's going to be the same protocol essentially that you see in the schools with regard to temperature checks, social distancing, the plexiglass barriers that are put up, the PPE, and the expectation that people are also going to follow the rules that have been established about no congregating, no lunch, breakout rooms and things like that. So there should be an observable consistency that you'll see between the expectations going on in the schools and then what had actually, you know, been going on at all of our central office sites since March.
Thank you very much, Dr. Karastis. At this point, that concludes my questions. I know that President Kotman wanted to make a comment before we turn it over to Financial Operations and Jeff Pritchard. President Kotman?
So board members talked about doing some restorative justice being or being exposed to restorative justice. And Darren was able to, several people, and we have staff, and I'd like to make sure it's clear that we do have staff that can do it. I feel it is inappropriate for our staff to in this particular situation. So Darren on tomorrow is going to start working with Erie County Restorative Justice organization to start to facilitate that. And he'll be providing information. I wanted to inform the board, does anyone have any concerns about it? I'd like to hear about it now. But short and simple, they are probably the only one other than our own school district staff that can do that type of exposure and seminar and training or whatever. And there are various steps that they will outline and Darren will coordinate that with them. Does anyone have any concerns toward that?
Just have a question. Is it a
I can't hear you.
You're muted now?
Is it a training or will they be facilitating a community-building healing circle for us?
I shouldn't have used training. It'll be a healing circle. And she, she's outlining it and Darren will provide to outline everyone. So you'll have a chance to scrutinize what her ideas are on that, okay? I shouldn't have used training. I should have said circle.
Mr. Petrucci, board member Petrucci, I have three quick statements I'd like to make relative to your last points, if I could.
Well, at the floor, shares, Dr. Cash.
Hey, colleagues. I apologize, but it's just, it's come to mind as we've all been talking. First, as we start to try to bring kids back, you may want to just think about the optics of when and whether you're going to come back in person to board meetings and how we set that up. Because, you know, I've always been concerned about these folks that push large, complex school districts to open and all of them are working remotely in their organizations. So it's just the optic issue. You should think about it. I wouldn't do it this week or this next week. And the reason I And the reason I say the circle, you should think about it. My second thing is, my second statement is, next week, there's an inauguration that I believe is going to occur on the day of our board meeting. And I don't know, I don't know what safety measures have been taken for City Hall, for example. City Hall is, is a very prominent building. It's our capital building for Buffalo. And so I'm concerned about it, given what I saw last week in the country. So just think about it. Maybe Will can look into that for us, but I wouldn't recommend coming in next week on inauguration day. But I do think that other meetings, you've got to start figuring out as a board, when you're going to start coming in, in person, if we're opening up schools for in-person. And then the third thing I'd say is, some of you have written about a statement relative to last week, and I heard you, I listened to you, but I wanted to wait until we got together as a board. And what I, what I would recommend at this point, colleagues, we had asked Mike Cassely and his team to write a statement, and, and they did, he and his staff, they did a great job. I don't know if all of you have the statement or not. I certainly can send it to you. But I recommend that we simply join on and say that we support the statement, and, and maybe we can send something out to that effect. I don't think everybody has seen the Council of Great City Schools statement, but it was well-written, and it was to the point. And I think it's timely between now and next week. And that would be my recommendation, rather than we try to crash something, given some of the divisiveness that we've seen, even here in our own great city. So those are the three points that I wanted to make. You can think about it, you can let us know. Or, Mr. Petrucci, if you have any thoughts on behalf of the board, I'd be welcome to hear.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. I did see the Council of Great City Schools statement. I think it's a great statement. I can, I can stand behind it. I know that Ms. McCozy had her hand up, so at this point, I'd like to recognize Jennifer. Jennifer, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. I did, I did see that, and I do stand behind that as well. I guess I was a little curious as to how, you know, we don't have a lot of city of Buffalo electives that have actually spoken out about this, and I didn't, I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to sign on to that statement and doing this publicly right now, that we're just sending a message, especially to our BPS community, that we've seen what happened. This is a unique moment in time. Our students should have the opportunity to feel like they can speak about what happened and speak about it freely. So that was where I was going when I presented that email. But I, I stand behind, you know, if we're going to go with that statement, but if we can publicly make a statement that we stand behind that, and maybe put that out there with the Council of Great City Schools statement to our public, I want to be able to personalize our public, our BPS community, you know, where we start with that. That's only my concern. It's, it's personal, it's a personal statement, so I understand if that's not how we're going to go, but I just wanted to be clear, that's where I was going when I presented.
What is the board's wishes on this? Does everybody want me to develop a, a template where we, where we either attach that, and then we have my signature, the president's signature, and then, like you've done in the past, the rest of you, we could just list your name? Are all of you willing to be listed on that? We might even have your signature. I don't know if we do. But either way, is this a unanimous position, or do some of you would like not to do a name on the statement?
I fully support it.
Excuse me one moment. If someone can please mute, and there's a lot of noise in the background, and someone is programming their microwave, so if everyone could take a moment and mute, and those that are on the phone, please mute your phones.
So are there any objections? Why don't we handle it that way? Are there any objections to us standing behind some of the statement of this, of this type? Or the actual statement, I should say?
What's, what's the time and date that the statement was set?
It was the day, I think it was the day after.
Yeah.
And I think Eleanor, Eleanor sent it out to all of us.
Okay.
She did.
I'm going to resend it right now.
Phenomenal statement.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Colleagues, Mr. Pritchard is on standby.
I have, Ann Revere, your hand is up. Did you want to say something in regards to this?
My hand didn't, I apologize. I didn't.
Oh, okay. No problem.
Everybody's starting to freeze.
Take my hand.
Larry, you're frozen. Kathy, you're frozen.
Okay, so Dr. Cash, I think you have a good idea as far as piggybacking off of that statement. I think actions, you know, everyone likes to do these statements or whatever, but I think the actions are what it should be about always. Versus somebody in the statement. So I think board members, you know, I don't have, I think that if we stand in solidarity with the Council of Great City Schools, we are standing in a big footprint. And I think that that, that's a national footprint. And so I don't know if we can improve anything on, you can tell me, Dr. Cash, if you feel you can improve that, something better.
No, I'm recommending that, as a Council of Great City School District, that we stand in alignment with, with that statement. And I can simply say that and then append that, and you and I will, will be in signature to, to, in alignment with it. We won't have to say anything else.
That's exactly what I was stating, that if we're not going to create our own, if we're going to stand behind, because I fully support the, the statement that Great City Schools have put out, as long as we can, you can, you know, put that on there and have us all sign on to it, then the community itself sees that we're in agreeance. And like you said, President Kotman, in this big foot, you're, you're right. So I completely agree, but as long as we can personalize it and say to our community that we stand behind that, and we're not just, you know, we can be public about that.
Real quick, Mr. Scott?
I just want to agree with Dr. Cash's other two points about the concern next week, but also that if we are going to be moving towards bringing our students back, bringing our staff back, I think it is important for us to demonstrate that we are going to be comfortable coming back in person in some way with obvious modifications. But I think it's important for us as leaders and board members to demonstrate that we are going to also come back in person for our meetings.
Dr. Cash, I am concerned about staff next Wednesday coming into City Hall.
Correct.
I did have a conversation today with the security downstairs in regards to the concern about the possibility of what may happen within the next week, not just, because, because I think that we need to actively listen and understand that realistically, they are not going to do much damage to anything in Buffalo people.
Really?
And, no, I'm saying if they catch you out by yourself or whatever, so I think to mitigate our people from being exposed to danger, I really think you might think about not having any staff there on that day, because I really think that.
I've already told them that.
Good. Thank you. Because I really think.
Yeah, none of us will.
Things are going to be outside of the norm. I think people, and what's happening out West, where people are in a, stopped at a red light, somebody's backing into, people are getting out there, being attacked, there are a lot of things that are going on, and I'm concerned about the safety of the staff. And I think we need to be mindful of that for the next week or so. I really do.
Thank you, President Kotman. Ms. Jay, raise your hand. Hope, do you have a question?
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to comment on Dr. Cash and Larry's point about the board returning in person. Going on the record to say, I am not comfortable with sitting around the board table, the, in, where we would normally hold the board meeting. I think that that is a very close space. I don't think that it would be prudent, under any circumstances, for us to be sitting around the board table in eight, in, you know, 807, where we normally would meet. So if, if there's going to be some discussion about moving the board meeting to some other location where we could sit at least, you know, six feet apart from one another, I mean, I would be willing to entertain that. But I just want to say that, you know, everybody knows that the courts have continued to be closed. All of our appearances have been remote. There's been no movement to go back into in-person court appearances. And, you know, that's my job, that's my livelihood, and I'm still appearing virtually for everything that I do. So for me to feel comfortable coming into a building where I have to be sitting in that close quarters with people, I need to know that we're going to be making accommodations for that as well. I don't think it's, it would be, I don't think it's fair to ask us to sit around that table.
Yeah, I agree with you, Hope, and I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't clear. I didn't think we should come into City Hall necessarily, but, because I agree, unless it was somehow in the, in the council chambers or something like that.
Right.
But I think maybe a school, because I think, I know we've, in the past, we've been able to really distance and space, spread that out. So Darren, if we get to that point, let's, let's start thinking about what that might look like, maybe Bath Park or someplace like that.
Share that with you. I know it was either late November or early December, President Kotman and I had already mapped out either doing it in the black box at Performing Arts, because we're able to socially distance there, or even at Waterfront, so we're still able to live screen. So we had, had that conversation, and I will follow up on those locations with Mike Luci to see where we can best live screen from and still hold the meeting and be socially distanced.
Great. Do that starting in, in March, so that we can, I'm sorry, February, so that we can inform the board, inform the board, okay?
Absolutely.
Mr. Hurd, you had a question?
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Mr. Petrucci. I would just say into, since there was an impeachment by bipartisan vote today of the President Trump, I think that we should look at the climate next couple of days and make a decision there, to see how it affects this area in Western New York. I know the concentration at the Capitol building is in every state, and it would be radical groups that would be protesting the inauguration, and so I think that we need to just take a close look at what's going on in this area and make our decisions upon that. And that includes all staff members, not just City Hall.
Well, that's right. But I think.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think we, we're not going to be, it's not going to be fear-based, it's just going to be cautious-based and, and make sure that we still are able to do our business. Got to do our business, and we got to take leadership in that. So that's what I, that's why I brought up those points, but we'll know a lot over these next couple of days, and I've instructed staff that they don't need to come in, you know, until after the inauguration.
Right.
At least in this building.
I mean, also to monitor things like phone calls or threats or anything like that, that the board can be aware of.
Yeah, and vice versa. Let us know.
Thank you.
Okay.
So at this point, hearing, not hearing any further questions, I'd like to turn things over to Finance and Operations for Mr. Pritchard to give a presentation on the federal stimulus, district financials, and the budget update. Mr. Pritchard?
Okay. Anybody else having trouble with the screens? Everybody's frozen on my screen.
No.
No.
Okay. I wonder, Darren, should I, can I do something, or should I do something? I don't know.
Mike Luci said he can go down and see you, Doc.
Okay, have him come on down.
Okay.
Meanwhile, let me introduce Jeff Pritchard. Although Mike, tell Mike somebody has to put his slides up.
He's doing it right now, Dr. Cash.
Okay. So Mike can come down, and you can go ahead and put Jeff Pritchard's slides up, and he'll begin, and he'll let you know when to please go to the next slide. He'll handle all of the slides, and there are about five slides, I believe, four or five slides, fairly brief, that he'll get through it, but it's very, very important, each slide. Each, each thing that he's going to talk about is critically important, and then we want you to ask, you know, as many questions as you have afterward, so that we can be very clear about where we are with these, with these three issues. All right, you can start the slides, please.
Thanks, Dr. Cash, and good evening, board members. Mike or whoever's doing the slides, can we bring them, do Page Two, please?
Just scroll down.
So what I have here, you know, we'll go over a brief update of some various budget-related items. A lot of this, I think, is just good reference material for board members to have over the coming weeks as we begin our budget process and, and really find out how, with the federal aid and the state budget, how these things are going to start to shake out. So first thing we wanted to go over was the most current federal COVID relief bill. So this was signed in, in late December. We still don't have all the regulations yet. The total of the bill was $900 billion. President-elect Biden called that a down payment. Of that $900 billion, $82 billion is related to education, and $54 billion of the 82 is K through 12 education, and that's nationwide. That's about four times the size of the K through 12 allocation in the CARES Act. And there's a few different estimators out there in terms of what that could mean for the district. And it could be, based on roughly four times the size of the CARES Act, that that could mean an allocation of $80 to $100 million for BPS. And again, I'll get to a little more detail on this later, and how I think it might, it might actually get to us in the budget. In addition to K to 12 allocation as part of the COVID relief bill, there's also a Governor's, what's called the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, that also is nationwide. And the, the bulk of that fund is related to non-public schools. This is a little bit different from the CARES Act, where the non-public school portion was part of the district's portion. In this case, they took it out, realizing that it was a little cumbersome to do it that way. And after you take that out, there's about $1.35 billion. So it's not a, not a significant number compared to the, the rest of the K to 12, but it could ultimately be several hundred thousand dollars, depending on whether or not the governor allocates a portion to the school district from that, from whatever portion Governor Cuomo gets. The one big missing item in this COVID relief bill was state and local assistance. And as you've, if you've listened to some of the governor's statements over the last couple of days, they're dealing with roughly a $15 billion deficit next, next budget year. And one of the comments that the, that the governor had said, that if he cuts education aid 20%, that would only cover about a third of that, meaning they would, that they would have to make significant, across-the-board cuts everywhere to, to reach that $15 billion, and essentially that they need significant aid from the federal government, and I think we really already know that. So the big questions that still, that relate to this now is, you know, when will New York State pass this aid through to the district? So the, any aid that we're going to get is going to be a pass-through from New York State. What years will this aid cover? You know, we don't really know that yet. It goes out to 2023, but New York State may, may shift it into, most likely, next fiscal year. Will the state use this aid to offset state aid cuts similar to the CARES Act? The next slide, when I get to it, talks about that a little bit. And then what is the timing of President-elect Biden's additional stimulus proposals? Because those proposals that we expect will have a state and local assistance part of that, that ultimately may be something that New York State needs to complete their, you know, their budget for this, for this coming year. Next slide, please. All right, so this is just, this is a quick snapshot of our state aid run for the current fiscal year that we're in, and I just want to show that, because I think it's, it's good to see how, how these numbers kind of shake out. In, in here, you'll see our, the aid run for Buffalo Public Schools for 2021, and you'll see that I have two big blue arrows down towards the bottom, and in there... And in there, you'll see a federal CARES restoration and a pandemic adjustment. So what the state of New York had done when the CARES Act came out was, they, once they determined the amount, the allocation that was going to come to BPS, they made a corresponding reduction in state aid. So the, the amount that came in through the federal aid did not in any way supplement the district. All it did was fill in a hole of an equal size, the numbers identical, um, that, that was in, in the state budget. Um, it is quite possible that this current aid may, may have a treatment similar. We're not going to know probably for a couple of weeks, but, um, I did want to just show that so everyone can see how, how that works or how it looks on there. And, and again, you'll see 29.6 million dollars coming into the district and 29.6 million going out. So it was just, it was just, um, basically a net zero for the district from the CARES Act. Uh, next slide, please? All right, so on this slide, um, and typically we would do this about a month earlier where we would share kind of the tentative, um, some of the key dates in the budget process. Um, but in, in this instance, I'm really showing from January through May. May is typically when we adopt our budget. January, by January is when we normally kick off the budgeting process. So, um, I'll just go over a few of the, the key points in here. Um, we, we tend to follow this pretty closely because it's a similar setup each year in terms of some of the January. This is when we, I lost, oh, there it is. In, in January, this is when the governor typically releases his, uh, proposed state budget for the next fiscal year. So, um, uh, this week, the governor had a state of the state. And then it's usually around the 19th or 20th, I believe, that there is normally a state budget. Now, it's, we, we don't know if there's going to be certainty regarding, um, regarding reductions in, uh, the current year, the year we're in state aid cuts or in next year. So we don't know, but that, that may be one of the, one of the things that comes out of that proposed budget, or at least some indication. And again, I, I'm hopeful that we'll find out where, what, what is going to be, uh, the district's allocation from that federal COVID relief bill. Those are things that we may find in the next couple of weeks. Um, we'll also have our second quarterly financial report that is completed, uh, in January, and that is our really, our first really good projection for the 2021 fiscal year for the rest of the year. So that, that comes out at the end of January and we'll pass that along to the board. Um, March and, or February and March is when we're going to be starting the, the budget process. Um, as we've talked about over the last several months, we know that if there are significant reductions in aid, um, and, uh, and, and there's no restoration from the federal level or anything like that, reductions may be necessary in the budget. We're not going to, you know, we, we don't have those to talk about at this point, but we, we, we know that. We, these are things that we're planning for, looking at different scenarios. Um, it's also important to note that, you know, I have another slide that goes over this in a little bit, that everything we're going to do really needs to look on a multi-year level. Um, you know, we're in a structural deficit position right now based on the last, uh, state aid budget and all the indicators from the state for how their budget is. And, uh, you know, we're, it's not a, let's get through one year and we'll be fine the next year. It's, uh, we, we've got, you know, we have to have, uh, recurring, uh, revenue increases or recurring expenditure reductions, um, that, that happened in the next couple of years to make sure that we can, uh, balance our budgets out into the future. Um, February is also the time when a lot of the legislative, um, foundation aid requests, legislative requests, lobbying of the legislature and governor. Obviously, it will be different this year. Um, typically those things are done in, in Albany, um, and, uh, in, in oftentimes in large public meetings, a lot of these things will be, uh, uh, virtual. Um, and, and will certainly be a little bit different, just knowing where the state's coming from. Um, board work session, obviously there's one in March. Um, April, um, is when, April 1st is when the, the state budget is adopted. At that point, state aid should be finalized. I have a little question mark on that because, and we'll talk about this in a minute, even the current fiscal year, even though we had, uh, state aid supposedly finalized, there was also this caveat that the governor was able to make reductions later on. And, and you'll see that, that there have been some cuts and there still may be more. We just don't know. Um, there's board finance work session, um, our third quarterly report. And, uh, by the end of April, we have to have essentially a draft, a high-level budget, um, and a balanced four-year financial plan to the board, because we also have to submit those by law to the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority, the control board. So that happens at the end of April. Um, May is typically when we would do the budget adoption. The date that I have on there is the May board meeting. So the, these are, are, you know, you know, again, some of the key dates that we have to, uh, to look forward to. Um, uh, the big unknown again is what, what is our state aid going to look like? Um, when, and when will we know? And how will federal aid, um, tie into that? Will there be additional federal aid that might come to the school district? Um, what's the timing of that? Because ultimately we'll, we'll have to let departments and schools start budgeting. Um, and depending on information that we have in January, that may dictate how in, in what we need to do February and March. And then again, in April is when we find out final state aid numbers and that may require further adjustments. So a lot is open at this point because there, there's some big ranges of, uh, of state aid numbers that we might, and federal aid numbers that we might ultimately see in, in our budget and how it, how it ties in with our expenditures. Um, next, uh, next slide, please? So those are the, the key dates going forward. Um, this document here is just a quick snapshot of our four-year plan. So I mentioned a little while ago that as we're thinking through, uh, decisions in terms of, uh, the, the budget process and, and what type of, uh, you know, what type of state aid, um, potential cuts, federal aid offsetting reductions, things like that, we have, it's important to note that in our adopted plan from April of 2020, we had over the course of four years, a, a $220 million deficit between our, our revenues and expenditures. So 50 million in, in this first fiscal year and 65, 60, and 45. Um, those are pretty substantial deficits that, that we projected. And again, that has to do with in the last year, uh, the, the last fiscal year, that there were reductions in aid. And in the four-year plan, we made the assumption that there will be increases in the out-years. So you'll actually see revenues growing in '22 and '23, '24. Um, so, you know, just to, just to, as a reminder, we, we do have these deficits that we have to deal with, even if we, some, if we end up with a status quo budget this year, um, and it appears as though we would need no reductions based on, based on, um, you know, what we thought it might be, well, we still do have out-year deficits. So some of this in the next few weeks will come into, you know, this'll, this'll come into a little more clarity once we have, uh, hopefully, you know, the state aid run, uh, from the governor's budget proposal. Um, a little further on in there, so you, the, the top section shows the adopted, uh, four-year plan, 220 million dollar deficit through November, um, in the 2021 year. Um, and these are, these are rough numbers. That 50 million dollar deficit actually drops down to about 16. So that's, that's good news. Um, again, in about two weeks, I'm going to have, uh, uh, you know, a, a full projection for the full year that will, um, you know, that will be much further refined. But I do want to point out on here, the, the primary or most significant, uh, uh, savings that we're seeing so far this year is really a result of transportation, um, being very limited because the BPS students are all, um, learning from home and, uh, the charter schools and non-public schools, they're, the, you know, the, the quantity of transportation is much less than, um, originally budgeted. But what that also means is that the next year, our state aid's going to drop down correspondingly. So next year's, without us even doing anything, um, related to the, the budget projections for the 2021 budget, our four-year plan had a 65 million dollar deficit in it. And right now, um, uh, we'll have a 23 million dollar, uh, further deficit due to, uh, if we don't spend the transportation dollars this year and this year's budget, we have those savings, but then next year, we're not going to get transportation aid. So we're going to need to fill in a, a gap, um, related to transportation aid. So that, that deficit goes up. Um, so, you know, again, we'll, we'll have much more detail, um, in the coming weeks and, and, and months, but I, I did want to remind the board members, all board members and the public that, you know, we are dealing with a, a, with significant out-year deficits going forward. And, and this really mirrors, um, you know, what we see in other districts and it also mirrors what we see in the state. We model our four-year plan in large part on what the state does, because if the state shows, uh, uh, flat or increasing education aid, that typically would mean flat or increasing education aid for us. If they showed a decline, that might mean a decline for us. So we don't, we're, we'll, we'll know more in the coming weeks when we see what the state has, but that's, that's where we are with this. Um, and, um, you know, more, certainly more to come. Uh, next slide, please? And this is really the last, uh, slide that we have, uh, that I have to go over right now. So when the state, uh, when the state budget was adopted, it allowed the governor, if certain conditions were met, and those conditions were revenue fell short or expenditures exceeded plan. Um, in some instances, uh, expenditures exceeded plan and definitely revenues have fallen short for the state. And that allowed Governor Cuomo the ability to make reductions in, uh, in, in state aid that was previously budgeted. So if the state said they were going to give us a certain amount of state aid, they had the ability to recapture some of that, um, during this fiscal year. And they have so far. And we've already talked about a bit of this. So this is that 20%, uh, the, the 20% possible cuts that the governor had talked about. Um, and what I've got in here, just to show you sort of a recap of where we are right now, um, 8.8 million is the amount that we had recorded in our audited financial statements for the 1920 fiscal year. So in the general fund, the state had cut 3.6 million. And in the grants fund, um, 5.2 million. And what that 5.2 million is, it was 20% of the outstanding receivables that we had on our state grants, um, that the state had indicated or is indicating that they're going to withhold 20%. Now, whether that 20%, because they, they, they're careful to use the term withheld, um, meaning that it's not a cut yet, but it could become a cut. So we had to, in our financial statements, recognize the, the significant possibility that that might become a cut. So 8.8 million, and that, that was already recognized last year. Um, but I just wanted to recap it here. Um, and all of it's charged to the general fund because the grants fund, um, doesn't have, doesn't, isn't able to carry a surplus or anything like that. So if we have a grant for a million dollars and, um, we filed a claim after we spend that million dollars and the state only reimburses 800,000, then there's a shortfall and that shortfall has to be covered by the general fund. So that 8.8 million is a general fund loss and, and that was recognized in the last fiscal year. Um, this year so far, I'm projecting somewhere between 12 million and 16.2 million. That, that's based on what we have seen so far. And I'll tell you how it's calculated. In the general fund, um, I am only showing amounts that have been deducted or held to date. So you'll see there's 2.5 million in the general fund. Um, 1.3 million last week was held from our charter school, uh, supplemental tuition reimbursement. That's 1.3 million. Uh, over the summer, a 1.2 million dollar bullet aid that was in our budget was, was held up and it's still held. Um, and that, that helps supplement our, our health services grant. So right now, the amount that has been held by the state and the general fund is 2.5 million. Um, we have received, um, I think we probably received about 150 million in aid. So this is a relatively small number, but again, it's, it's an amount that was in our budget and is being held by the state and there's no assurances that we will ever see this money. We hope we do, um, but we, we, we don't know. Um, it may grow substantially. Um, we've communicated in prior, uh, presentations that 147.6 million is what that 20% is. So the state could, uh, if, if they were to make reductions of 20%, it would, that 2.5 million would bump up to 147.6 million, just in the general fund. Um, the next line on there is, is grant fund sources. So most state grants have been, uh, approved for spending so far this year, but the state is holding 20% of reimbursements on those grants. So that 20% is 9.5 million. Um, and so 2.5 and 9.5, that's the 12 million on the low end that I projected so far. Uh, the one, uh, interesting note that we have so far is that our health services grant thus far, and this is what pays for all of our nurses, primarily it's our nurses. Um, state has not approved that yet. So our grants department has really no official word from education department whether, whether that funding is going to be, um, whether the, the grant will be approved, whether the funding will be approved or anything like that. Obviously, because this is nurses, it's, it's a, it's a service that the district has to by law provide. Um, and, uh, we, we've not heard, we continue to follow up, um, on what, on what the status of that health services grant, along with that 1.2 million dollar bullet aid. If by chance the state cuts that outright, then 13.7 million is the amount in grant funds that the general fund's going to have to cover. So there's some significant dollars here. Um, I'm going to include these projections in the second quarterly financial report that I issue in a couple of weeks. So, um, I'm going to recognize those in my projections as potential losses, uh, reductions in state aid during this, during this fiscal year. So probably the full 16.2 million until, um, we get better information. So, um, the, that number, um, is, is, uh, potentially growing, but is still a significant amount of dollars, um, in, in terms of amounts that are held, uh, by the state so far. And, uh, you know, we really haven't heard anything else, um, relative to that. But again, it's just, it's worth reminding ourselves, and I do because I follow what the state's doing all the time, they're dealing with a 15 billion dollar deficit. Um, and, and education, even if they cut 20% in education, that would only cover a third of their deficit. So there, there's, uh, you know, the state, the state definitely needs federal aid to, uh, to, to maintain the, the, the things that the state does, including education. So it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, certainly something we have to be concerned about. And hopefully we'll have more clarity in the coming couple of weeks. Um, when, when the governor releases, we hope he releases his, uh, his budget with, with projected aid runs. Um, you know, if we, if the governor releases a budget and doesn't provide details of, of how much aid each school will get, that, you know, will be left kind of having to guess at that point and we may have to wait until, uh, further on. So, um, we're monitoring this, uh, every day, um, looking at the money coming in, um, following what's happening at the state level, um, and doing our own internal projection. So, um, that's really the update that I have, uh, at this point. And then if there's any questions, so we can go over them.
Thank you, Jeff. Well done, as always. For Board Member Woods.
Jeff, you're indicating these large amount of losses, um, losses in the, in the grants. Do, do you operate the same way we do in the county that we passed appropriation for a grant, the grant gets cut, and the grant appropriation is what's reduced and the cuts have to come out of the grant staff? So it's, you reduce effing in, it's in the grant rather than the operating fund?
Yeah, that, that would be how we would normally like to look at this, but the, the interesting thing here is that the state is, is withholding reimbursements from the grant. So if I make a cut in the grant, my reimbursement request from the state will be reduced by the amount of that cut, but I'll still only get 80% of the amount that I claim. So they're not allowing us through the, the method that they're using to hold this money back, doesn't allow us to make these cuts in the grant. If they, if they came and said, please cut 20% out of your grants, we could do that. But right now, if we cut 20%, they're still going to only reimburse us 80% of 80%. So we, we can't, aside from not spending at all, um, we can't, uh, you know, we can't avoid the general fund. And, and again, the, the, one of the biggest, most concerning grants we have is that nurse, is the health services grant which provides our nursing. Um, that, the nursing is going to happen whether, whether the grant exists or not. I don't believe there's really any way that we can, you know, that we would ever fathom making reductions in there. Um, and again, this is something that we've raised to the state on a number of occasions. Um, it would be much easier if they came out and just lopped off a number off of foundation aid, that we could then make cuts accordingly. Right now, I can't Right now, I can't even track all the reimbursements in the grants because they're not always quick at reimbursing them and it's not always clear the amount that they're doing. But we've booked this to be conservative, we're planning on only getting that 80%. Now, there may come a point at which we get more clarity from the state and at that point, we can start making, you know, making further reductions. But that's, at this point, it's really not feasible given the way that they're holding these funds. And again, to clarify, we're being told that these are not cuts, these are just amounts being withheld. But as the case may be, it's, they've got the money and there's always a chance that it might become permanent at some point.
I mean, I don't, I believe we're going to have to get a federal bailout and you just said they passed Mother Cares Act. Hopefully, that can be part of the bailout, but the bottom line is, way through our year, so there is no way that we can start budget and make up for the full year in half a year's time. That just, so it's going to have to be a federal bailout. Because this is a possible situation. But the only good news I can tell you is the ad hoc committee is lobbying to try to get interest, additional interest revenues and a share of the funds from the
The bus, school bus.
So we're looking for additional aids because we realize this is a very serious situation. And I really appreciate you keeping it in front of the public so nobody is surprised it has to make some very difficult changes. So that's the only thing I have to say about it. Anybody else have any other questions on this?
Larry Scott does.
So I know this is a small piece of the cut that we're facing, but if supplemental aid for charter schools is being held back, are we in any position to also then hold back any aid that we're sending to charter schools as a result?
I don't know that I can answer that. It is interesting that of all the cuts, or, you know, most recently, that the one, you know, that they would that this being a reimbursement of a prior year cost is being reduced while charter schools have zero reduction in their tuition. The tuition formula they have is 100% funded. And, you know, that's, it is very concerning because there's no mechanism that I'm aware of that allows for that. But, you know, that may be something that we have to look, that we have to look a little deeper into.
So when I asked that question, Jeff, I asked that at a meeting with the Big Five, I was told that if we did, if we did charter schools, that the state, they would go to the state and the state would take it directly and send it straight to them themselves. I was told that they would circumvent us and make sure that that money got to the charter schools based on the contract, on the guidelines. I asked that question recently in a meeting in the Big Five. I asked, and they said, no way, that it's not, that, you know, they're fighting for us to get that, you know, money back. But they said that if we chose to make that action, that the state would, in return, just handle it themselves. In the county's budget for situations of this nature, pass a resolution when we adopt our budget, put it in the adopted budget as part of the budget package, our state aid, particular purpose, is reduced. If the revenue is not going to materialize, we include a resolution that says the contract that is funded by it will also be reduced by our, included in our budget resolution by law. We make it very, that's the budget, that if they cut our aid for the schools, that we also take that state aid cut and pass right along, resolution in there. So I don't know if we have one in the PS budget, city budget, but I know we have it in the county and I suggest we look into the legality of putting that resolution in our budget. I'll send you a draft of what we have, but what we did. Because you've got to protect yourself, any cut has to be able to be passed along legally. You put those resolutions in your budget.
If I could just close up on my question. If in fact, the state then would step in and provide that funding to charter schools, doesn't that then solve our problem, Jeff? It's no longer coming out of our budget?
No, because what it is, the state does what's called an intercept. And they, once they determine the amount that we should have paid, they will reduce our next state aid payment by that amount and pay it directly. So it's, yeah, unfortunately, it wouldn't work that way.
I think in fairness to this, to our budget and our children, I think that we need to ask that we, maybe the news or someone to do a story or we need to do some sort of a statement because it's not fair that last year, this money with the intent of getting back, and this year, they decided not to give it back. And I don't really feel that that's fair. I don't feel that's legal either. Because why would you have us take funds from our district to support another group of children and penalize our children? That just doesn't sound that that's fair and that's unacceptable. And I think that an article or something publicly about that, I really do, but that's what I'm guessing.
It's actually pernicious, pernicious what it is.
I have Jen McCosy and I have Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. I see you raise their hands. Jen, you have the floor, followed by Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Thank you. I just want to push my support right toward what President Kotman is saying. It's just, I mean, it just stinks of yuck and it just can't be. And, you know, we're starting to make all kinds of moves. I don't know what we want to use, new year, new time, whatever. But we really got to start standing up for our children in a way that we haven't done in decades. And we have a board who, as far as I can see, I don't want to speak for anybody, but as far as I can see, we all see, you know, the loopholes and let's time up. Let's get somebody online, do an article or something, start speaking up, do whatever we got to do because that's ridiculous.
Can I interject and say the Big Five is working on this for us? Jennifer Powell and the Big Five is working on this issue for us. Not just for us, but for the other school districts that it happened to.
Yeah, whatever we got to do to stand behind them then, yep.
And Shelley Mayer is informed about it, Senator Mayer, who's over the Education Committee. So Giorgio Gesudo, who formerly was our Big Five representative, is her administrative assistant. So attention is being given to this at this point. Also, just quickly, I want to interject, Jeff, that in the meeting that I had with the Council of Great City Schools on Friday, they talked about this last group of money, as when it will be extended out until '23. Thing that came in that conversation. So I don't know if that's true, but the conversation was on Friday.
Thank you, President Kotman. Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown?
Yes, did anybody recently see a huge list of charter schools who received PPE? I think it's, all this money. So, I don't know, charter schools in this area receive a lot of federal money. And I just don't understand how they're supposed to be public institutions can get that money and we can't.
Well said, Kathy, well said.
They're double dipping in the pot.
They really are private institutions, they really are using public money. And that's been proven throughout the country. There's been four or five lawsuits that have substantiated that. And so we've got
You see his gun, Sharon. We got a new, we got a new Secretary of Education in town. Maybe we can make some progress now.
The First Lady is in our corner too.
Are there any other questions out there for Mr. Pritchard?
I have one. Mr. Pritchard, if these charter schools are double dipping in the pot and it's proven, shouldn't we have not to pay them then? I mean, is there any, do they receive funds from the government?
Well, I don't know that, I guess I did see the article that charter schools did receive those PPP loans. You know, obviously, they kept getting all of the aid that they were previously entitled to. To my knowledge, they had no reductions, so they had no need for that. I don't know if that might impact ultimately how they, whether or not they have to reimburse those as loans or otherwise. But that's, I don't know that I can necessarily answer the question on how that will work out for them. But it was certainly interesting that they're, that they apparently were eligible to get those loans.
I believe they was characterized as grants. So they're grants, those afforded, you know, and we're paying for the same purpose. Should they withhold our monies to them since they're receiving the monies already and then let legal handle it?
That's not how it works. That money was from the federal government, it was for private schools that sit in the category of being a private school. So the real issue is, how can you be a private school and a public school all in the same breath?
That's right.
So that was, that was a powerful move and we will be able to use that in the future. That was powerful. So it will benefit us in the future.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Pritchard?
Colleague, you're a first-rate CFO and he watches your money like no other I've ever seen. He's first, best in class, best in class.
Sharon, you have a question? I see you raise your hand. Do I dare say, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Just wanted to thank, I wanted to thank Jeffrey though. I wanted to thank him for his participation in our meeting with the Controller. Some excellent points, very much for bringing up those audit situations. But we will be getting some money from the city, thank you for that. A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I second it. All right, good night, everybody, thank you.
All right, be safe.